I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of the meeting, this special meeting of the Prince William County School Board has been called for the sole purpose of addressing the return to learning plan presented to the school board by the superintendent on January 6, 2021. The meeting is being conducted electronically under the authority granted by Virginia Code 2.23708.2A3 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permit the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of addressing the impact of the pandemic on the operation of Prince William County schools and for transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. At this point, we will take the Pledge of Allegiance. I see we have a student, if a student wants to step up to the mic and lead us in the pledge. And just as a reminder for everyone this evening, please keep your mask on even while at the mic, okay? I'm going to ask everyone, please keep their mask on.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, motions in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams seconds motion. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just noted that, wanted noted that I was not in favor of the citizen comment time being limited to citizens who had not spoken on this topic matter before. I think in the future, that should be a full board decision or full board vote.
Understood. Okay. Any, Ms. Jessie.
Ms. Jessie, I support that concern from Mrs. Williams that the full board was not informed, that selected individuals, people who have spoken before were not given the opportunity. I received calls, I did not know that that took place. It makes us appear to only want certain people to speak that have spoken on the topic and maybe on a topic in a way that we did not support. So, I agree with Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Understood. Ms. Zargarpur.
I am a fan of public comments, so if moving forward, we ever do this again, I would like to really hear everyone's voices as well.
Understood. I made the decision because we were limiting it to 60 minutes and I looked at this meeting as an extension of the last evening's 10-hour meeting and thought that it would be good to hear from folks who hadn't spoken already. We did have the portal open and we received emails regarding everyone's concerns. Please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Please unmute. Raise your hand for a yes, Ms. Ralston, for now? Great. Okay, we have a yes from Ms. Ralston.
Vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passes.
Next, this special meeting of the school board being conducted to enable the school board to address and take action if agreed to on the return to learning plan presented on the school board on January 6, 2021. The school board procedural bylaws specifically, school board policy 132, regular special enclosed meetings provides for citizen comment period only during regular school board meetings and not special meetings. However, the school board agreed by majority vote on January 6, 2021 to allot one hour during this meeting for additional citizen comment in order to conduct the board's business on this item while also receiving additional public input beyond the extensive citizen comment received during the January 6 meeting. The first 30 citizens who signed up with a clerk have not previously spoken on this topic shall be allowed to participate in either in person or virtually as provided below. Citizens who cannot sign up or did not sign up at this time are limitation strongly urged to provide their input to the board through the alternative methods, means described below, especially through the citizen public comment form accessible on the school board's webpage. Due to COVID-19 state of emergency and legal restrictions on the school board's authority to conduct its meetings through electronic means, unlike other public bodies' meetings, electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussion at this meeting by board members, staff, and citizens must be limited to agenda items. In this case, the superintendent's January 6 return to learning plan. Citizens may speak for up to two minutes. Citizen comment time is provided on a limited basis in order to allow public comment both in person and through electronic means during the state of emergency. The first 30 citizens who have not previously spoken on this topic and have signed up in advance with the school board clerk via email between 8:00 a.m. Monday and January 11, 2021, no later than 12:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 12, 21, may address the school board in person or virtually on agenda items. If you would like to sign up, speak, okay, we've done this, please, please provide your -- we did this. Those wishing to speak electronically, provided with a link, you should have the link. Citizens who wish to speak in person should have noted the clerk by 12:00 p.m. Those who do not wish to speak in person electronically but wish to submit a written statement about the agenda may provide input to the school board again by accessing the public comment page or by sending an email to the school board. Please email pwcsclerk@pwcs.edu for the link to the public comment page. We have, is that 12 speakers? 12 speakers signed up to speak in person and 18 who will speak virtually. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium and/or speaking virtually. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please state your name and address for the record and please keep your mask on throughout. Speak loudly into the mic, that will help the folks at home hear. I don't have a list. Oh, I do, got it. All right, we'll start with the in-person speakers first. We'll go with Ms. Sandra Kern. After Ms. Kern, so just so you're ready, Scott Bishop, next Christine McCollum, then Anne Jarrell. Sandra Kern.
Oops, papers. Don't have a computer in front of me. Good evening, I'm Sandra Kern and I speak to advocate for my son and many others. There are many students here in the boardroom that I hope that are acknowledged by each and every one of the board members. I quote, or found a few, "Upon the subject of education, I can only say that I view this as the most important subject which we as people may be engaged in." Abraham Lincoln. "The beautiful things about learning is that no one can take it away from you." B.B. King. "Children are apt to live up to what you believe of them." Lady Bird Johnson. "Education is a passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to those that prepare for it today." Malcolm X. "He who opens the school door closes a prison." Victor Hugo. "It's easy for a kid to go join a gang, do drugs. We should make it that easy to be involved in football and academics." Snoop Dogg. "Anyone who has ever made a mistake has never tried anything new." Albert Einstein. "I give you my Google education. I got this morning for all the board to ponder. My student wants to be in school, in a classroom thriving. Every single day that passes, there's no way to get it back. I encourage the sooner return to classrooms and transparent support for all safety for everyone, teachers, students, support staff, bus drivers, anyone that would happen to have anything to do with Prince William County schools. The learning gap is growing daily. You have the Prince William County Schools data to see the issues that are going to present to you in the future. Reading is a life skill. I have no problem going before the Board of Supervisors at this point to ask them and thank them for all the support. I need your support for my son to get back in that classroom. Thank you."
Scott Bishop.
Thank you for having the special meeting to listen to our concerns. When we asked our, some PWC high school educators their biggest concerns on the proposed delay, we received the following responses. Despite the teachers' best efforts and offerings of extra help, students are not comprehending or retaining what they are teaching. They feel the part of education that is lost is the learning from students. Technology issues including login problems and frozen screens are compounding student and educator stress. Job security, more parents are pulling their kids out of PWCS. They don't know if they will have a job next year. They feel the students who excelled with developing an in-person relationship with their teachers have had their needs pushed aside. Our school's safety division leaders have presented data at each meeting showing that our schools are in the lower risk metric for spread within the school buildings due to all the mitigation strategies that PWCS has put in place. Their history of having zero outbreaks in the schools means these safety measures work. COVID is present in the schools due to being present in the community, but staff and school nurses are working closely with the health district to limit exposure to protect those working and learning in the buildings. Secondary school leaders have been preparing the buildings to welcome back the faculty and students who feel their learning style is best accommodated through in-person learning. They have been waiting for the green light from the superintendent and school board to move forward with the hybrid plan. Dr. Waltz proposed another delay to start date of all returning students, stating it's a lot of work to change schedules and transportation times. Just because these tasks present great challenges does not mean you should throw in the towel and find a way to not make it work.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bishop. Christine McCollum.
My name is Christine McCollum and my address and phone number on file. The main concern I have heard about virtual learning is mental health, a topic I am no stranger to. Many may recall this as I reached out to many PWCS staff and parents about bullying that was taking place in our schools. Due to bullying, my daughter, a bright and beautiful gifted high schooler, attempted suicide in Colgan High School in 2017. And my son, who was also in high school at the time, was mentally no longer able to continue school in the building. In 2019, I lost my oldest daughter to suicide and raised her two sons. The grandsons I speak of are safely at home right now and will continue to remain virtual this year. They don't understand why people should be made to go up in the building when people are dying from COVID every single day. They have experienced heavy loss and I can only imagine anxiety it would cause children to go into the building, have to see people in masks, teachers in masks, sitting apart from each other. It's like something in a science fiction or scary movie. I looked to the data when determining whether my grandchildren would remain virtual or attend in person. I also am a teacher and at the last school board meeting, I saw the highest number online of cases of COVID that day and deaths. Dr. Waltz was asked why. Well, that is why. That is why the plan changed. I'm actually surprised that we continue to move forward with bringing more students in-person learning. My grandsons haven't done the best online, but it's consistent to what they did last year. And the same can be said with my students. I've looked at their data. What they're doing now is pretty much what they did when they were in the building. And some even said, their parents even said that they're doing better because they're getting more time with me. I give them the time that I would be traveling to and from school in small groups. They're not disrupted for classroom disruptions. We should work together on staying safe at home until it's safe or we all get vaccinated. Saunders offered an online grief session for my grandsons. There's things like that that we can all do, that we can all work together to help everyone out.
Anne Jarrell. After her will be Stan Glass, Jessica Nelson, Cynthia Galt.
Hello, my name is Anne Jarrell. I live at 16847 Francis West Lane, Dumfries, Virginia. I'm a sixth grade science teacher at Potomac Middle School. I am hoping that you will adopt the superintendent's updated plan for return to work. My reasons for this include the health and well-being of all staff, support staff, students, parents, and relatives that will be impacted by the current COVID-19 pandemic if we return in person. In the past year, scientists have worked diligently to design vaccines. Now they are becoming available. I ask that you give staff and support staff the opportunity to receive the vaccine. At Potomac Middle School, teachers are expected to supervise other teachers' classes or a small group of students when a whole class is divided up among four teachers if needed. This coverage occurs when a teacher is in a meeting, an IEP, or is absent. After covering extra students or classes, who is keeping track of the movement? Who will notify us if a student tests positive for COVID-19? Who is responsible for keeping up with the contact tracing in our building? This would be very difficult to make sure that we are notified if a student that we do not normally teach has COVID-19. What will we do if a student or someone we come in contact with at school has COVID-19? Do we quarantine at home? Will this be for 10 days, 14 days? How will students receive instruction then? This is not even possible that someone will reach out to us. This is not fair to us. These are CDC expectations. I know there are mitigation steps in place, but what about the number of COVID cases and the number of missing teachers due to flu, COVID-19, family member illnesses? Will there be enough substitutes? There are many other concerns, including the lack of substitutes, eating lunch with the students. Will there be Plexiglas?
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
When will we have restroom breaks? Thank you very much.
Stan Glass.
My name is Stan Glass, 13225 Nicholson Drive here in Woodbridge. I want to thank you for giving me the time to speak this evening. I come here as a concerned parent. I have a daughter who is a junior at Hilton High School and I not only come here concerned about her, but I'm concerned about her teachers, concerned about the faculty, I'm concerned about all the folks that work in the schools, the bus drivers. This is a devastating pandemic. I don't need to rehearse the numbers with you all, but you know, we have a 9/11 every day. There's over 3,000 people dying from this every day. What is the motivation to bring our students back into the classroom when it is apparent to me that the virtual learning scenario is working for the students? I have been on ParentView, the ParentView portal. I'm in more contact with the teachers this year than I have ever been. And it appears that my daughter and her friends, they are learning. I don't see the urgency, why we would risk bringing our children back into this environment. I don't even understand why the kindergarten to fifth grade students are allowed to come back. I don't understand what your motivation is in allowing this. I think everybody needs to take a pause and just really consider if it was your child who got COVID and died. There is no going back on that. There's no take backs, there's no do-overs. What's the rush in doing this? So that's my petition this evening. I wish that you would not vote to bring back in-person learning at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Nelson.
My name is Jessica Nelson. My information is on file. Thank you for the opportunity to address the school board members and the community regarding, regarding the current decision on the return to school buildings. Takes a lot of courage for Prince William staff and community members to speak up in front of a board on a topic that is currently very heated. What I hope to see in our elected school board is a willingness to listen, to reflect, and to respect the speakers that do not align with your agenda. Educators have voiced concerns for years about student academic performance and student social emotional health. Neither of those issues are new to our school buildings. We love our students. We miss our students. Our hearts break for students that have lost family members and friends this past year due to COVID. As educators, we advocate for our students in the classroom and throughout our community. We are continuing that this evening. We must have schools that are safe to learn. This is a non-negotiable. Based on today's headlines, are you willing to guarantee the health and safety of all staff and students you are returning to the classrooms? Schools are an extension of the community that they serve. The COVID numbers are rising every day and I cringe inside every time I hear that we have broken another record. Once you start to return more people into the school buildings, the likelihood of spreading the virus will increase. Children are children and even some adults do not take the precautions and mitigation factors seriously. The decision to return to school buildings should be delayed until everyone that works in a school building has been vaccinated. The vaccine will allow teachers and other staff members to be safe when returning to the school buildings. I am relieved to hear that there is a plan being created to distribute the vaccine to staff and teachers, and I look forward to receiving clear directions on where and when we can receive it.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Cynthia Galt, and then after Cynthia will be Kaylee Chambers, Jessica English, Riley O'Casey, Bridget Lorenz, and then Kevin Call. Cynthia Galt.
My name is Cynthia Galt and my address is on file. After PWCS teachers, including the most health vulnerable Tier 1 and Tier 2 employees, told their stories of fear, disrespect, and discrimination, often ending in tears, I heard a board member say that they had not heard anything original. It was heartless, but it became my goal. First, I noticed that while we are talking to you even in person, you sometimes appear to be working on other things and you've even left the room. Considering the focus on restorative practices, I would think modeling active listening would be the best practice. Meeting before last, the board stated that the return to learn plan was in the hands of the superintendent. Dr. Waltz laid out a plan that would slow the return until school staff could be properly vaccinated, a move embraced by other counties. It now seems the decision is only his as long as he's on board with you, because here we are. His plan keeps our 15,000 staff members as safe as possible, and that's good for all who enter our buildings. Your February 2 return plan is based on superior mitigation strategies. Other counties recognize that implementing all five CDC strategies both completely and consistently is virtually impossible. In special education, our students are not required to wear masks, and students of all varieties struggle to wear them properly and consistently. They struggle with social distancing, hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette skills, and staff from across the county have stated that disinfecting and contact tracing is hit or miss. The dashboard alone shows mitigation is not working. We've had 29 quarantines and 212 new cases since the last meeting. This board's past and present occupations, including a doctor who took an oath to do no harm, gives you the tools to ensure that safety measures and laws like the ADA are followed to the highest degree. And finally, we received word today that we had our first COVID death in our staff family. So I propose that the new high school be named for Denora Meha, God rest her soul. It is a name of which we can be proud.
Kaylee Chambers. You can bring, yeah, thanks, great.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Chambers and I'm a sixth grader. I'm somebody who loves school. In 2020, one of the things I was looking forward to was going to middle school. I wanted to try out for the tier team and get a locker and more, but that was taken away. Even though it was hard to get over, it has hard, it has been hard to do virtual school. My teachers are great and been doing the best they can, but virtual school is still so stressful and hard to keep track of. I used to wake up in the morning excited to go to school. Now I wake up and I don't really want to go. Every time the school board says we can go back to school, they get my hopes up and cancel it, and I cry so much. I will do anything to go back to school. I will wear my mask and stay away from my teachers. I do love my teachers and to see them in person would make me even happier. So please let us go to school, it would make my whole year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jessica English.
My name is Jessica English and my address is on file with the clerk. I'm both a county parent and a county educator. I believe we should be 100% virtual until we have been able to achieve widespread vaccination. But tonight, I want to discuss with you my concerns about this year's impact on student academic progress and mental health. Even in normal times, students struggle, often due to conditions outside of the schools. Schools do much to support our students so that they can thrive, and we continue to do this now. We repeatedly hear that students are falling behind in reference to arbitrary benchmarks. I am concerned that students hear this and internalize this, meaning that they themselves are or will be failures. This leads to self-fulfilling prophecy. Now more than ever, students need safety, security, stability, and celebrations of the successes that they have made. I've asked more than 60 parents and teachers about the successes they've seen this year, and I'd like to spend a little time sharing them with you. The 100% virtual model isn't perfect, it doesn't work for everyone, but it has led to successes, and some of them are surprising. Students receive more personalized support with breakout rooms, including small group work and leveled reading groups. They have private chat, they have emails to get support from their educators. Office hours have been extremely powerful, but these will be lost with the hybrid and concurrent model. Many of our most valuable students are participating and asking questions more frequently because they feel safe doing that in private chat. One teacher shared that a student they've had for three years never used to participate in school, but is now doing work and asking questions. Another teacher noted that many of their students with IEPs who struggled in previous years, years, pardon me, are now thriving. Students who miss class can then view videos that teachers make and do asynchronous work, and that's better than catching up with many teachers after school.
Thank you very much, Ms. English.
And more. Thank you very much.
Riley O'Casey.
My name is Riley O'Casey and I am an educator in Prince William County Schools. Dr. Waltz, with your recent update, update to the return to school plan, you are showing your commitment to the safety of our students and staff. Thank you. Our students' safety will always be the top priority, but the safety of our educators is just as important. How will students be educated if there are no teachers, no bus drivers, no food service employees, no instructional assistants, no nurses, no school counselors, because they are sick or they have passed away? Please understand, board members and anyone watching this evening, teachers want to be with their students, they want to be in the classrooms, we want to see our students face to face, not through a screen. The division amongst parents and educators is very disheartening. The vitriol towards and untruths shared about teachers on social media is horrendous. Governor Northam recently stated, "We need our teachers to get back to work." Wait, what? Really? We are working. We are working harder than we have ever worked before, and shame on those who think we are not. Please consider the following in your discussion tonight. The subs, are there enough subs available? Is hybrid learning just as or more effective than complete virtual learning? Please wait for all educators to be vaccinated and stick with the plan that Dr. Waltz proposed. Thank you.
Bridget Lorenz.
Hi, my name is Bridget Lorenz and my address is on file. Let me start by saying that I am a parent in the county and I'm also a preschool teacher. We are often forget, forgotten about in preschool as everyone says K-12. Let me enlighten you on how it's been so far going back in November. So our children for two hours and five minutes need to have mandatory socialization skills. This proves very difficult with the COVID pandemic in trying to keep them six feet apart. Also, they're four-year-olds, so you can imagine how many times I utter the phrase, "Please put your mask on properly, please put your mask on." It's no less than 50 times a day, and I am not exaggerating. Which brings me to the next point. In November, when I did go back, I had a fever, I went to get COVID tested. The county had set up different sites and I was told that I was five minutes too late after a half hour after they opened, and the results would be 10 days from then. How are we contact tracing if we're not even testing properly? I'm from New York and in their district that I'm from, we had, if they hit a certain threshold, there's random testing within their county. We have zero protocols in place for testing teachers or students, and I just think we need to do better. Fairfax as a whole has delayed opening and they are also receiving the vaccine faster than we are. I know it's out of your hands, but at this point, what is the point in sending kids back if we have a vaccine on the horizon? I think it's just better to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Kevin Call.
Hi, my name is Ethan Call and I'm in eighth grade at Benton Middle. My address is on file. It has been 305 days since I had the option to learn in person. That is almost a year. I do not, I did not want to come talk to you today. I don't like to I don't like standing in front of people like this. Here's what I want you to know. Some of my friends like virtual and are okay with it for a variety of reasons. I do not. I want to go to school. I understand it is different than it used to be, that I need to wear my mask at all times, that I need to follow the code of conduct Mr. Grasik has put in place, like the tape in the hallways and the bathroom rules. He showed us pictures of that and morning announcements last week. I understand that my classroom will look different and that there will be fewer kids in the school. He tells us there will be 300 of us in the building compared to the usual 1,400. My parents have signed up to drive me to school full-time, and I know lunch will be different. With all these changes, I still want to go back to in-person learning. I am 14. You probably remember how hard middle school is. It is even harder when you have to sit still in a chair for so many hours and stay focused. My head hurts, and I've started to hate school. Please listen to me. For me and students like me, virtual is not working. Yes, my teachers are working hard to teach, but I am not learning well this way. Even my math tutor has seen the difference since I went virtual, and it makes her sad because all her former students at her private school are in person and ahead of me. You keep telling us that we are supposed to focus on learning and growing. I challenge you to do the same. Listen to what we are telling you and then learn from it. Act on it. We need you to advocate us. I thought schools are centered around students. I listen to every school board meeting. I hear a lot about teachers and very little about us. You have let me down. Tonight, I need you to hear me. Tonight, I need you to know that I will be back in my school building well before that number hits 365. Thank you for listening. Good evening.
Mr. Stevens, we'll now move to the virtual speakers. That was the end of the in-person speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to keep the same rules, so if somebody runs over two minutes, I'm going to go ahead and mute their microphone. Our first speaker is Darcy Stanley. You can unmute yourself. Okay, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Darcy Stanley, and I'm a parent and teacher in Prince William County. I have taught in the county for 16 years. If high schools move to the hybrid model, instruction will not improve. I hear many parents say that their children will benefit from in-person instruction, and I'm here to tell you that it won't change at all from virtual, because the majority of our students will still be online. I attended a four-week training on concurrent instruction from the Prince William County Course Catalog. The training was led by professors from New York State, who continually advised us to do things that were incompatible with Prince William County and Virginia regulations. The key takeaway from the training was, keep teaching how you're teaching virtually. With the majority of parents choosing to keep their students virtual, my rosters will have two to seven students in person, usually around five, and 23 to 28 students on Zoom each period. Even more switched to virtual last week, we found out at our faculty meeting. It would be crazy for me to give two to seven students extra attention and ignore everyone else. So my in-person kids will sit in a basically empty room with white cinder block walls, since we had to remove all posters to prepare for disinfectant sprays. Meanwhile, I will stay near my desk in a corner, behind lines that my building taped onto the floor for social distancing, so that I can respond to the questions and comments from the students on Zoom. It will be harder for all of my students to hear me, because I'll be wearing a mask. Currently, my students attend office hours when they need help. Many attended today. They share their screen, and I give them one-on-one assistance. The hybrid bell schedules will change to accommodate the extra lunch shift, so we will lose office hours. That means virtual students, most of my students, could only have office hours on Monday. Right now, my students are learning. While virtual isn't working for all students, it is working for many. Concurrent instruction will be lower-quality instruction for all students at the high school level. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Stern. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Lori Stern, a teacher in the county, and my address is on file. When Prince William County was determining whether students should return to the building, I sent an email to the board. Dr. Latif replied to me and said in part, quote, "The board's resolution allowed flexibility that the administration can use to bring students back. This will be up to the administration," end quote. Last week, the administration proposed a new plan as a result of changing metrics. The administration, which works closely with related agencies, should determine what is safe and best for all. The administration doesn't have to concern itself with politics. Rather, the administration can make the most objective, informed decisions. Most importantly, Dr. Walts' most recent proposal allows for school staff to be vaccinated before a full return to the buildings. Dr. Latif, I can agree. The administration, specifically a man who has spent a lifetime in public education, should be the one to make this call. Finally, to honor the first Prince William County Schools employee who has died from complications due to COVID, there is a GoFundMe that has been set up in her memory. Her name is Dinora Mejia. Please remember her name and give if you feel led. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mary Jean Kellogg. You can unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jean Kellogg, and my information is on file. PWCS is on stage. Possible candidates for our superintendent position are watching. Based on its reputation and size, there is an opportunity and interest for some highly qualified candidates. In your own search statement, you want someone with successful work collaborating with the school board, staff, and community. In a survey, the district's number-one strength was excellent teachers and staff. Many feel disrespected and disregarded. Too often, teachers' concerns fall on deaf ears. The school board should lead by example. This board had confidence in Dr. Walts to design two learning plans. Three reps replied to me that Dr. Walts is cautiously watching the metrics and other criteria and making his recommendations with complete trust in him to make the right decision. Yet with each plan, you want it changes. His latest plan considers the safety of children and staff, along with our district's size, school metrics, and CDC and Virginia guidelines. Dr. Walts' frustration was obvious as he tried to answer questions in reply to your comments. His plan is best suited for us at this time. He agreed to move up the timeline if there is a downturn in the numbers and teacher vaccinations. Other local school districts are back to virtual only at their superintendent's recommendation. Haven't heard of any special meetings through the media, except for Prince William. Today, the tragic reality of COVID hit our district. Teachers hope for an F in this prediction. There are more serious outbreaks with schools with outbreaks and more positive cases. We're being watched by our next school superintendent. We need to put our best foot forward, because we expect only the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Dennis Caravantes, and then Gabriel Caravantes. So we'll do Dennis first. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, and then when you're done, then Gabriel can go.
Hello, my name is Dennis Caravantes. I'm speaking today to advocate for teachers. First, I want to thank them for all they are doing during these trying times. My kids are engaged and learning and thriving. They're also in elementary school. Thanks for all the time they're putting in to make this work. Quick check on my phone, and there's countless emails, texts, and alerts at all hours of the day and almost every day. Second, please keep elementary school schedules consistent. Teacher administrators and students need time in the evening to live. Having people leave school buildings at 4:30 eats into their evening routine, and it is not fair to anyone. If high schools or buses are the issues, deal with those. Don't affect others. Third, please keep teachers and school personnel safe by reducing the number of children in school buildings. I understand some children, some people, need to be there, but until all of us are vaccinated, there will be people at risk. The virus is rampant throughout our region, so minimize exposure. When are we going to hear about a vaccination plan? I've been advocating for testing, but we haven't done real testing. So let's advocate now for a vaccination plan. Let's get everyone vaccinated. Four, if we need substitutes because someone is on quarantine or because someone has been affected by COVID, why not draw from central? I mean, they have qualified people that I'm sure will be glad to go back into a classroom for a few days. I also want to thank you for your work. I understand you will not make all of us happy, but I believe that you're doing this to help our children and improve our community. If you have higher office aspirations, I say do your job, and your effort will be rewarded. But don't play politics with our kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gabriel, you can go ahead.
Hello. My name is Gabriel Caravantes, and I'm a third grader at Old Bridge Elementary. I love my school. I love my teachers. I'm learning virtually because I feel safer, and there is a lot of people getting sick. I don't want to get sick or get my parents or teachers sick, so I'm staying virtual. But I know other students need more help, and a lot of them really do not wear masks. If more of us stay home, we are helping everyone. Please don't change our schedule for when we are in person. If we leave school at 4:30, we won't be home until 5:00, 5:30. Then we have to have dinner, take a bath, and go to bed. My doctor always tells us that we have to spend time outside, but we can't do that if you are sending us home so late. Our teachers have families too, like little kids, and now they will have to find who can watch them if you change their schedules. You're adults, and you are smart. Please don't change our schedules, because that doesn't seem smart or fair. Ask our teachers for ideas. They are really, they really are the smartest person, people in the world, and they have solutions for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Whitney Wallace. You can unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Wallace. My address is on file. I'm a parent and 13-year elementary teacher in PWCS. My principal and AP have been amazing during this pandemic. Thank you. While I know that some of the board members aren't even listening, I'd like to address Prince William County Schools' COVID dashboard and a lack of response to our own data. When I found out that PWCS was creating an online dashboard to track COVID cases in schools, I was thrilled with the transparency. Over time, I've realized that my faith and trust in the county has been misplaced. I am disappointed with the lack of transparency and accuracy of the dashboard and the inaction from Dr. Walts and the board. What is the point of the dashboard if we are not responding to the data to keep students, teachers, and families safe? As of today, there have been 360 reported cases for the month, and it is only January 12th. According to the dashboard, we are in the moderate-to-high-risk category, which we have been in since we began school on September 8th with zero cases. This makes no sense. I know personally of COVID cases reported to schools with letters sent to the community that don't appear on the dashboard. I know of families in my neighborhood who've had COVID and did not report their cases to the schools. I know that the noes listed on the dashboard for close contacts will soon be yeses in all elementary schools. 162 elementary cases have been reported to date, according to the dashboard, and that number is low and inaccurate. I know that schools are already facing staffing and substitute shortages as teachers are quarantining due to testing positive or as primary contacts. At least three teachers and two TAs at my school have had to quarantine since winter break. We are going to be forced to close due to staffing shortages. Please do the right thing, prevent more cases, and move to 100% virtual. Wait for the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Hens. You can unmute yourself. Angela Hens. Okay, you have the floor.
Hello, my name is Angela Hens, and I live at 12996 Bayou with Serpents in Woodbridge. And I will be reading a letter from a teacher. Good evening. Mr. Wilk and Ms. Jessie, thank you for asking tough questions last week, when even central office staff refused to provide answers. Ms. Williams, thank you for standing up for transparency. Ms. Wall and Dr. Latif, since apparently you believe that citizen comments are a waste of time and there is nothing original left to hear, perhaps it's time that you step down and be replaced by elected officials who prioritize the concerns of their constituents. I was appalled by your behavior last week. You ignored heartbreaking stories of Tier One being forced back to the classroom despite having cancer, autoimmune diseases, and other medical conditions that doctors said necessitate them working virtually or quitting. You chatted casually or even left the room while teachers who were in the building told of failures of our mitigation strategies. You have the nerve to feign indignance and surprise when Dr. Walts spoke of his plan to push back students returning due to rampant community spread, despite the fact that he called each and every one of you individually during the week. And after all of that, you couldn't even come to a conclusion. To say that this community is disappointed in you is a gross understatement. Last week, central office admitted that we only have 200 to 300 substitutes willing to come into schools. That number is wholefully inadequate for a division with 97 schools. Parents, it's your time to shine. We are in desperate need of in-person substitutes who will be, take over the class after a teacher tests positive or is forced into quarantine. We already have over 360 cases reported on the dashboard this month alone. This past week, we had five teachers quarantining at my school and no one to replace them. The school board needs to stop playing political games and step up to be the community leaders that we elected. We are counting on you to make responsible decisions that put the safety of our community over your political ambitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Raggiotti. You can unmute yourself. You have the floor.
The school system's COVID-19 dashboard indicates 50 new cases in September, 84 new cases in October, 212 new cases in November, 326 new cases in December, and 360 new cases thus far in January. Students are quarantining due to exposure at school activities. One employee has died. No one should be in the buildings now. This is a pandemic, and human arrogance is a central component of human failing. I support the ideals of Dr. Walts' plan. As an experienced school superintendent, Dr. Walts understands that vaccinating employees will take more time than anticipated. He knows this will bump into spring break and travel, and waiting two weeks after spring breaks protects students who have no vaccine and their families, many of whom will not yet be vaccinated. The part of Dr. Walts' plan to reach out directly to struggling students with tutoring will be the effective means to help these students, because coming back into the building is not. With a high school perspective, being in the building means yo-yoing students in and out of the building. It means staggered arrival and departure times. It means masks on everyone for seven hours. It means maintaining six feet of distance. It means teachers splitting attention between those in desks and those on Zoom. It means no after-school help and no office hours. It means teachers and staff will be policing student mask and distancing behaviors. How is this in any way conducive to helping students, education, or socialization? With the exception of Mrs. Jessie, I have lost trust in this school board, and I am not alone in this conclusion. On the other side of this pandemic, as we settle into the new phase of education, do you want this to be your legacy in the eyes of teachers and staff, the community? Do you want to change this trajectory? Step one would be to do what you said and allow Dr. Walts and his career as a school superintendent to determine how best to proceed with the remainder of this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gina Leonard. You can unmute your microphone, and you have the floor. Gina Leonard, you can go ahead and speak. I'm assuming you're having some kind of a technical issue. Why don't you go ahead and leave the meeting and rejoin? Make sure you choose computer audio when you come back in, and we'll try to get you. I'm going to go to the next speaker, which is Jennifer Fliss. She'll be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, I'll be speaking on behalf of PWCS parent Jennifer Fliss, who is unable to speak tonight. Her address is on file. Good evening. I'd like to address our current situation. School is important, and being in a social environment helps kids learn and is great for their mental health. However, COVID is not just a virus. 20 days ago, I got my first symptom. I had ridiculous chills, low-grade fever, sore throat, and aches everywhere. As the virus progressed, I've experienced loss of taste and smell, sheer exhaustion, body aches that... body aches that made me feel 100 years old, sinus pressure and pain, nausea, shortness of breath, and a deep horrible cough. Stating the symptoms seems mundane, but it has been life-stopping. I've had to use inhalers and nebulizers, which I haven't needed in 30 years. I lost 17 pounds in 12 days. I'm still exhausted. I wake up tired. I cough so hard that I'm afraid I will burst blood vessels in my face, and cough medicine doesn't work. I still can't walk from my bed to the bathroom without huffing and puffing like I just finished a marathon. My body still hurts everywhere 20 days into it. This virus has spread through my entire extended family despite quarantine, cleaning, and masks. There is no stopping it once it's in your house. My nine-year-old daughter had it and was over it in three days. My 13- and 15-year-olds are 14 days into it and struggling. This is life-altering. This is painful and exhausting. I would not wish this on my worst enemy, and my case was mild. I want my daughter in school. I want to go back to the office and see my friends. However, it's not worth it. School isn't the same. The office isn't the same, and the risk it poses to the general public is unmeasurable. The numbers of positive cases soar with each holiday. When schools open, the children carrying the germs might be fine, but the people they bring the virus to won't be. The vaccine is starting to be administered. Can't we wait a few more months for it to become available for all?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try Gina Leonard again.
Can you hear me?
We can. You have the floor.
Okay. My name is Gina Leonard. Last Wednesday, there were over 60 speakers on the Citizens Panel, the majority of which came up to the podium to implore you not to move forward with the hybrid plan. They shared how Tier One accommodations to teach virtual were frequently not being honored, and that the reality of mitigation strategies is they aren't always working the way they're designed to. To the school board, I've compiled and emailed you a list of six questions drawn from just a small portion of the panel that deserve a response. At the conclusion of today's panel, because you say employee safety is a priority, we look forward to your responses to these questions. How do you advise the teacher who has cancer, who's being denied the accommodation deemed necessary by her doctor of teaching virtually, to proceed? Does she go in and risk her life, or does she take an unpaid leave of absence? How do you advise the husband-and-wife teacher couple with medically fragile premature twins to proceed? Send them to daycare and risk their lives, or take an unpaid leave of absence? How does the kindergarten teacher, who's required to tie shoes or zip jackets, able to do so without coming within six feet of a student? How do elementary staff monitoring lunch while students eat without masks on keep themselves safe when they need to help open milk cartons? How do you answer to the family of Denora Mejia, our first Prince William County employee to lose her life today to COVID? How will you answer to the future impending deaths that are imminent if you cannot wait for our future? All employees are fully vaccinated. Do the right thing. Close the school buildings until all school employees again have been fully vaccinated. And again, we look forward to your responses to the presented questions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jandira Arbelio. I apologize if I... All right, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Jandira Arbelio, and my address is on file. I'm a very concerned parent. I want my child back in school, but I want her to be safe. It is a fact that we are experiencing a rampant community spread in our county. Just today, I read terrible news that an elementary school custodian in Prince William County Schools has just died from COVID. The point of switching to virtual is not to deny children and education. It is to ease the burden on our healthcare system and to keep our children and teachers safe. Car accidents, heart attacks, strokes, they don't stop because the hospital is full of COVID patients or shortage of medical staff. Instead, exhausted hospital personnel treat regular medical emergencies in addition to the influx of COVID patients. As hospitalizations continue to rise, we risk the healthcare system being overwhelmed, just like California. Los Angeles EMS personnel have been told to transport only severe ill patients and to cut back on their use of oxygen. Hospital staff must make an agonizing decision of who to save and who to let die. We can't have this happen in Virginia. We need to take action now before it's too late. Going virtual means freeing up medical resources for our hospitals. It means eliminating the interactions of thousands of students and staff so we can bring our positivity rate under control. We, with a positivity rate of over 20%, returning more students to the school is just crazy. Governor Northam said, according to the UVA model, our COVID cases, our COVID cases and hospitalizations aren't expected to peak until Valentine's Day. Why are we rushing to return thousands more?
Thank you. We've got to stick to the two minutes. Our next speaker is Peggy Prather. You can unmute yourself. And you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Prather. My address is on file with the clerk. I am a high school teacher in Prince William County, but in the interest of contributing new perspectives not heard at last week's meeting, I am sharing a statement on behalf of one of my colleagues, a bus driver who is unable to speak on their own behalf this evening. This is their statement. I am a bus driver. We are expected to be in person four days a week. My supervisor comes in person to work half a day once a week and is able to either sit in her county car or be in her office by herself. Why is it not safe for her to be in her office, yet it is safe for us to be on a bus with students? Special needs and preschool drivers in attendance are required to use equipment to secure their students. There is no way to practice social distancing under these circumstances. Tears are worthless in transportation as our options are come to work, take leave, or resign. We are expected to do multiple runs per school, yet are expected to clean and sanitize the bus between those runs while also being expected to be on time to pick up our students, which we can struggle to do under normal circumstances. On buses, our PPE is masks and gloves. There are no barriers between us and the students and no barriers between the students except the seats. And if you think the seats will act as a perfect barrier, you clearly haven't been on a school bus in a very long time. As a driver without an attendant, it is very difficult to monitor if the students are keeping their masks on properly. Please consider these words and vote to remain virtual until all staff have had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. Consider Dr. Walts's plan and vote for it as it was presented last week.
Okay, our next speaker is Erica Weiss Cruz. Erica Weiss. You can unmute yourself.
My name is Erica Weiss. My address is on file. The following information is from four separate people who've requested that I speak on their behalf. One from a parent. I want to share with you that my special needs son was sick for one day. He was fine on a Sunday, sick with a low-grade fever on Monday, and fine on Tuesday. The only reason I had him tested was because I had classic COVID symptoms on that Saturday. I notified the school immediately and was shocked that no notification was sent out and no classroom quarantine was initiated. I keep thinking that if I didn't have him tested, how easily he could have infected his classmates and his teachers. From a second parent, I disagree with the Prince William County exposure policy of greater than 15 minutes within six feet in a day within 48 hours of a positive test or reported symptoms. Many children are either asymptomatic or have very mild symptoms. Therefore, the 48-hour window is too narrow, as the child could have had symptoms before the adult even notices. I want full transparency with direct cases in my child's classroom, regardless of whether the county considers it to fall within the exposure criteria. I sent my special needs son into school in person with the thought that there was going to be full transparency from the county. I don't like the game of semantics. It leads to mistrust, which is exactly what I have now. This county has gone for it's okay for 10 feet apart. Nope, now six feet, and now three feet will work. This is not okay. From a staff member, when discussing mitigation strategies, staff have been informed that they must not be closer than six feet for greater than 15 minutes over a course of a school day from any other human being, because if one person gets COVID from another in the building, you have to justify how that could have happened. Apparently, it's situational now. Please don't play with the lives of our staff and students. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Ware. You can unmute yourself. Christine Ware. All right, you have the floor. Ms. Ware?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Christine Ware, and my information is on file. This is my 22nd year in Prince William County. I miss seeing the students in person, and I really look forward to seeing them again when it's safe. I was proud of Prince William this summer when eventually the school board decided to delay the return to in-person instruction for most students. This was the wise decision that many of the nearby counties eventually followed. COVID numbers continued to get worse, and I was partially relieved when my superintendent decided to at least slow down the return of students and staff to the school buildings in November. And now, here we are in January. COVID cases are rising. A vaccine is almost available, but not quite. Neighboring counties are virtual, and I feel like I'm watching a game of hot potato between the school board and county leadership about who's responsible and will be held accountable for decisions about hybrid learning. I'd like to share a few concerns about the transition to hybrid learning and the hybrid learning already going on. First, where's the depth chart? What happens when students get sick or must quarantine or even be out for other reasons? Substitutes are treasured and not plentiful enough. Teachers will have a lot to juggle already. A lot goes into keeping a building running on a regular day. Add in all the extra mitigation protocols, subtract some staff, and it's not difficult to imagine just not having enough adults to keep the ship afloat. Also, no criteria. Other counties have shared specific criteria that they are using to decide when it is safe to return to the building or when it is necessary to return to all virtual. We need greater transparency in how these decisions are being made. Mitigation and magical thinking is just not enough. One last thing. Oh, maybe not.
Okay, our next speaker is Jennifer Delinsky. You can unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jennifer Delinsky. My address is on file. I'm the parent of a high school student, and I'm speaking tonight to support Dr. Walts' revised return to building plan. While most everyone agrees that being in the school building is best in a perfect world, we are far from living in a perfect world right now. Yet during this imperfect time, I have seen the school community innovate and build resiliency in ways that make me proud. While the move to virtual school was daunting at first, we have made it to the mid-year point, and I've personally watched my daughter adjust to these changes and thrive in the virtual environment. Yes, I desire a sense of normalcy, but I do not believe that we are at a point where a return to school will be a return to the norm. This is especially true considering the timing. Right now, COVID numbers are higher than ever, hospital beds are filling up, flu season is upon us, and snow days are coming. All of these issues can sabotage a consistent schedule once we return to school. Additionally, starting a hybrid plan right now would destroy the consistency that schools and teachers have worked so hard to construct at a time when consistency and a sense of direction feel more important than ever. Dr. Walts's revised plan creates a way around these issues. First, it gives a clear set of dates and procedures which provide peace of mind. It also considers the safety of the current situation rather than reacting to the politics of it. I asked my daughter today how she felt school was going this year, and this is what she said. Honestly, my teachers have been amazing, and really, the hardest thing about it is I've had to take more accountability for myself, but I think that will help me in the future. If anything, I feel like I now have more tools to hold myself accountable, and I know better how to react in a situation that I didn't expect. Tonight, I ask for you to support Dr. Walts's revised plan, which will add consistency to our schedule, allow teachers the opportunity to be vaccinated, and allow us to move forward with a sense of purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Letalati Fulton. You can unmute your microphone, and you have the floor.
Hello. My name is Amy Lotsalati Fulton. I'm in Woodbridge. My full address is on file. I'm coming to you from a little bit of an objective and outside perspective. I am neither an educator nor a parent, but I am a product of Prince William County Schools, although it's been 20 years since I was in the system myself. Back then, overcrowding was an issue, but not the monstrous elephant in the room that it is now. I understand that's a huge part of the issue of returning. I also am the sister of someone who was a special needs student in the county himself, and I do believe that it's important for special needs students to be prioritized. However, I do want to reiterate to everyone that's said this in so many words, the learning gap that students are experiencing right now is not happening in a vacuum in Prince William County. It's happening all over the world. Right now, the best course of action is to listen to educators, listen to other school staff, including custodial staff, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, even coaches, even specialty educators like speech therapists and music teachers. Listen to their concerns. They're not only educators for the students and their classes, they're parts of our community. Any negative thing that were to happen to them would have a ripple effect on the community, not to mention their own families. Right now, we just reported, or The Washington Post has just reported its first cases of the UK variant of the coronavirus in Maryland. That's about to spread here. I have family in the UK. They are all currently infected with that variant of COVID. How did they catch it? They caught it because my 11-year-old nephew was infected in his classroom of only eight other students sitting 15 feet apart and diligently masking. His parents, my in-laws, work from home. It spread extremely quickly. Since the beginning of the year, with all necessary precautions, the UK has tried to have all students in person, but their learning has been consistently interrupted. I don't want to see the same thing happen here to the nth degree.
Thank you. The last speaker I have is Kendra Hemphill. You should be able to unmute yourself. And you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Hemphill, and I'm the PTO president at Old Bridge Elementary School, and my address is on file. I'm an advocate for virtual instruction as the pandemic continues, but I understand the need for some students to return to in-person learning. I come to you today on their behalf to ask that you reconsider delaying the in-person elementary school start time by one hour. Although one hour seems like an insignificant amount of time, it is valuable to the people who will be affected the most, our students, teachers, and administrative staff. As you know, the pandemic has brought about many academic changes and challenges for families and school staff. Our elementary students who attend school in person have adjusted as best they can to their new routine and current school schedule. A change, no matter how small, would cause even more of a disruption in their lives. Other concerns include safety, because many of the students would be returning home near dark. Also, it would shorten family time due to bedtime schedules. In addition, our teachers and administrative staff have done a remarkable job of adapting to virtual instruction and now transitioning to the hybrid in-person learning. They rose to the occasion, and their resilience should be recognized and supported. They too have families and responsibilities outside of the school that require their attention and time. Taking into consideration childcare needs, et cetera, eliminating an hour from their evening would upset their lives and daily routines as well. I urge you not to push back the start time of elementary schools and keep the same schedule that is in place now. Our youngest students, who most need consistent and orderly schedules, should not have to bear the burden of the school system's scheduling needs. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and for your consideration of my remarks.
Thank you. That was our last virtual speaker, Mr. Chairman. That was our last virtual speaker, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. We will move on to 5.1 Superintendent's Return to Learning Plan. We have a motion as an order. Ms. Sargapure.
I move that the Prince William County School Board resume discussion and take such action as may be agreed to by majority vote regarding the return to learn plan presented to the school board by the superintendent on January 6, 2021.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Williams, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. This will allow us to just continue our discussion from the other evening. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote? Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Sorry, my mute button was off. Yes.
I think she said yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes.
Mrs. Jessie, I said yes.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jessie.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Motion is eight yes unanimous. Motion passes. Okay, at this point, we will turn it over to Dr. Waltz, who would like to update us since last Wednesday. Dr. Waltz.
Thank you, Chief and members of the board. Good evening. I'd like to begin by announcing the retirement of Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman effective June 30th. I just received this tonight. He's up there on the screen. Give him the peace sign again, Mr. Iman. That's his trademark. I'm not going to go into any detailed comments tonight, but I do want everyone to know that he has served in a great capacity as the third deputy superintendent of the Prince William County School Division. Wayne Mallard was the first, Ray Darlington the second, and then upon each of their retirements, then Mr. Iman. That being said, I have worked with Mr. Iman in both the Greece Central School District as an assistant superintendent and here in Prince William for a total of 23 years. And that is a lot of service. And Keith, I'll just say to you, I really don't know how I would have survived COVID without you. We have an agreement that we have to buoy each other and we can't be both down on the same day. So, he's done a super job, a very caring person, started his career as an elementary school teacher.
I guess he had COVID.
So, tonight, I will provide...
Can you hold on, Dr. Waltz? Mr. Stevens, we're getting some background sound here. Someone's unmuted. I'm not sure where that was coming from.
I think I got it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Waltz, please continue. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Tonight, I will provide a brief reminder of the updated plan I presented to the school board last week regarding the return to in-person learning for those grades not yet in buildings. Our level associates will highlight some of the additional steps we are taking or are planning to take to assist students that may require additional supports. Turn it over to Associate Superintendent for Student Services and Special Education Denise Heedner to provide a more detailed update on our most recent health metrics. I provided a draft of my remarks to the school board yesterday along with my presentations or with the presentations. Please note that I have new information on vaccine distribution since that time and Ms. Heedner has added data to her presentation at the request of school board members on surveillance forms. But first, I would like to share some sad news we received yesterday. We have been informed that Potomac View Elementary Custodian DeNora Mahia passed away January 10 following contracting COVID-19. Ms. Mahia served PWCS for over 20 years. We extend our sympathy and thoughts to her family and it's just amazing because I actually know her. We have 12,000 employees, but on all my school visits, I get to know a lot of people and we talked last November and when I was still on Twitter, we took this picture and posted it to Twitter. Her principal, Ms. Green, at Potomac View, told me today that that picture, she talked about it all the time and said it was one of the best pictures she ever had. But when I go to these school visits and today I visited school number 19 in person, I always try to reach out to all the employees who work in the building because I realize they each play a critical role. And it's not necessarily a known fact in the community, but I came from a family of five brothers and absolutely zero money for college. And my first full-time job was a custodian in the Fuller Brush Factory, which put me through the two-year community college in Great Bend, Kansas. So, I do connect with custodians and appreciate what they do each and every day. I spoke with Principal Green today at Potomac View late this afternoon. They're obviously having a difficult time because she was way more than a custodian. She was very much a part of that community as well as that staff. People loved her, they respected her, and she was great with the kids as well. So, we know that she will be terribly missed and we extend our sympathy and thoughts to her family and the entire Potomac View community. This is the first active PWCS to be known to die...
Dr. Waltz, oh, sorry.
...from the virus. While it is not believed that she contracted COVID-19 while at work, it is a heartbreaking reminder of the seriousness of the virus and the need to remain vigilant in our personal and professional lives. As you are aware, last week, I presented a plan that aligns to both the D.C. and Virginia Department of Health...
Dr. Waltz, can I interrupt for just a sec? Dr. Waltz? Dr. Waltz, can I just interrupt for one sec?
Sure.
Some of the board members wanted to thank you for that comment on the passing of her and we'd like to offer a moment of silence at this time, if that would be okay? Just to offer a moment of silence from our school board. So, if everyone would just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Waltz.
That was well deserved and a good idea. As you are aware, last week, I presented a plan that aligns to both the CDC and Virginia Department of Health, the Virginia Department of Education guidance that recommends for schools with moderate or higher risk of transmission, specific learners should be prioritized for limited in-person instruction, including willing students with disability, English learners, and pre-K to third-grade students. Today, I made my 19th in-person visit, visiting Signal Hill Elementary School to welcome back their second and third graders and faculty and staff. And I'm very pleased to say that things were going very well. That administrative team does a great job along with the faculty and staff. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to Signal Hill and their community. Our ability to implement all the necessary mitigations becomes more difficult at the secondary level. Specifically, the ability to cohort in a single classroom is not possible due to the academic requirements at the secondary level requiring change in classrooms. This will increase risk in areas such as hallways and make determining close contacts very difficult. Based on the latest information regarding COVID-19 in our community, coupled with our ability to mitigate the spread of the virus in our schools, I believe it is necessary to delay in-person return for grades beyond third grade until the fourth quarter with the hope we see a decreasing trend in COVID-19 that lowers the overall risk by that time. One key mitigation that will reduce this risk is the vaccination and its availability for our staff. The governor has prioritized teachers and education staff for round 1B of the vaccine distribution. The Prince William Health District announced on Monday that Prince William Health District is transitioning into Phase 1B. The Health District must complete the employment groups in the order they are listed in Virginia's COVID-19 vaccination campaign. At this time, police, fire, hazmat, and corrections and homeless shelter workers come prior to childcare/K-12 teachers and staff. PWCS is in close contact with our Health District and will provide the information they need to contact staff when the vaccine is available via appointment. PWCS is also making space available within dedicated locations in Prince William County schools to administer the vaccine without disrupting instruction and in a safely mitigated manner. Additionally, we were informed this morning by Dr. Anshur. She is our Health District expert and the leader in the public health for Prince William County. She informed us that INI NOVA Fairfax will offer vaccines to all school staff by appointment Saturday, January 30 through February 5 and beyond as needed. Again, we will share updates as we receive them from the county. We don't have those specifics yet, but we are told that they are coming soon. According to the Health Districts, they are only offering the Moderna vaccine, which requires two doses for effectiveness. It is important to note that both doses of the COVID-19 vaccine must come from the same manufacturer. Per CDC guidance, the interval between Moderna doses 1 and 2 is 28 days apart. Preliminary projection is to have staff vaccinated hopefully by mid-March. In order to provide time for the vaccine administration, move beyond the winter indoor months and reduce scheduling uncertainty for our families and staff, the plan provided to the school board last week moves the return of 4th through 12th grade beyond spring break. The return dates are planned to coincide to begin two weeks beyond the spring break, allowing for the monitoring of any increase in COVID positivity that may occur as a result of the break. As such, 4th, 5th, 6th, and 9th grades are tentatively planned for House A to return April 20th and House B to return April 21st. 7th, 8th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades are tentatively planned for House A on April 27th and April 28th for House B. Current start times will continue as they are for all grades until the April 20th return. At that time, we would need to revert to an approximate 7:30 a.m. start time for high school. Middle schools would start at approximately 8:15 a.m. and elementary bell times will vary with most starting around 9 a.m. These start times are based on the current anticipated in-person attendance. In the most recent update to Parent View selections for return to in-person learning, over 52,300 parents or guardians selected virtual learning and approximately 34,600 chose in-person. We have seen a more than 11% increase in the choice of virtual learning since October. While nearly 60% of our students have chosen to attend virtually, we recognize that in-person learning is critical for many students and we will do everything in our control to bring students into buildings as soon as possible. In the meantime, utilizing the new federal COVID-19-related funding, or ESER, we will be taking a number of actions to further help our students that may require additional support, both virtually and in-person. I will now ask Mr. Mulgrew, Mr. Vixby, and Ms. Hart, Associate Superintendents for High, Middle, and Elementary Schools respectively, and Ms. Hart will represent Mr. Provincio and Mr. Erickson's thinking as well, to provide some detail to these additional supports that we are putting up. These supports include the addition of stipends or other compensation to be paid to teachers to voluntarily assist students beyond their contract hours or in lieu of a planning period. Our level associates will provide further details and I will start with Mrs. Hart, Western Elementary Schools Associate, who is representing her other two colleagues. Ms. Hart.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board, and Dr. Waltz. On behalf of my Elementary Associate Superintendent colleagues Todd Erickson and Nathaniel Provincio, I am here to speak about ongoing academic support and assistance for student success at the elementary level. Through many years of, hmm, years, it feels like years, through many hours of logistics, planning for instruction, and managing the health of students and staff, our principals are leaving instruction with their respective school communities on a daily basis. Together, central office staff, school administrators, teachers, and essential staff have rolled up their sleeves to reach and to teach. Admittedly, this is hard work, challenging work, and rewarding work. They understand that we eat an elephant one bite at a time. In this case, staff understand that we get around, under, or through COVID-19 one day and one grade level at a time. As you know, some preschool, kindergarten, and first graders have returned to the schoolhouse for learning. Today, second and third graders returned to school. Though I was preparing for this talk with you, my attention kept veering to this question: How are our principals, teachers, staff, and students acclimating to schoolhouse teaching and learning? So, after dismissal, I inquired, and in one word, this is what some principals said about today's community of preschool through third graders. Smooth, amazing, exceptional routine, successful, meaningful, energizing, awesome, fun, happy, and exciting. I know that we all proudly appreciate and value how well Prince William County schools have stepped up to this difficult but important work. Tonight's talk is about how we intend to supplement instruction for our students. This is the time of the year when we use our collected data on reading, math, attendance, and other indicators to monitor and adjust instruction for our below-grade-level youngsters so that we can strategize on how to gain more success. In doing so, we recognize the total child, his or her social, emotional needs as well as his academic needs. Abraham Maslow posited that people are motivated by five basic categories of needs: physiological, safety, love, esteem, and self-actualization. Again, we are connecting social, emotional learning to academic outcomes. We know that skills that students develop in social and emotional learning are closely connected to standards in many academic subjects. Let's go back to data-driven instruction. Using a plethora of data, we embraced response to intervention, which is one intervention model, also known as RTI. RTI is a tiered model approach for supporting struggling students and identifying possible learning and behavior needs. Here are the three tiers. During Tier 1, all students receive high-quality instruction. This instruction is research-based and includes differentiation. Then, in Tier 2, students who are not progressing adequately in the regular, high-quality classroom are provided with an additional smaller math or reading session. For example, these youngsters receive small-group direct instruction. In Tier 3, if a student is still struggling, then he receives one-on-one targeted intervention that matches specific skills to his learning needs. Let's take a closer look at reading and writing. Teachers, our teachers in Prince William County schools, are prepared to discuss or activate prior knowledge, model and help students develop questions while reading, connect what they are reading to another text, something they have seen or something they have experienced, visualize or picture what they are reading... visualize or picture what they are reading, make predictions about what will come next in the test, look back for key words and reread in order to classify, I'm sorry, in order to clarify or answer questions. Reading comprehension remains our goal. We recognize that people, not programs, matter most when it comes to intervention for struggling students. However, some of the most effective research-based instructional resources we use include Zones of Regulation for Self-Awareness and Self-Regulation, Lexia and Ponya Valley for Literacy, and Dreambox for Mathematics. Our teachers embrace the professional learning opportunities to manage these resources. Admittedly, targeted remediation remain, requires more time, more practice, and lots of affirmation and feedback for students. Each year, and especially this year, we intend to offer supplemental instruction before school, after school, on Mondays, and on Sundays. Yes, even on Sat, I'm sorry, on Saturdays. Yes, even on Saturdays. The supplemental instruction we will provide will be in-person or virtually. Plans for transportation are underway. And yes, teachers progress monitor students' growth to monitor and adjust as needed. Continuous improvement remains our motivation. Let's hear from Mr. Bill Bixby, the Dedicated Associate Superintendent for Middle Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Jason, would you please advance the slides to the middle school slide? Thank you, Jason. Uh, thank you, Ms. Hart, for giving us a nice frame of reference of the hard work our teachers and principals are doing. My slide is organized first to look at Mondays. Across our 18 middle schools and traditional schools, assistance provided by our hard-working teachers breaks into two basic groups. Small group support via Zoom, one-on-one support via Zoom. Again, there's an exception for the students who are in person and getting in-person support. But, but I want everybody to know, small group by Zoom, one-on-one by Zoom. Currently, our principals are working on expanding the frequency and duration of those opportunities. Like Ms. Hart said, we are also exploring transportation and accessibility so that targeted students who might do better with in-person support will be provided that transportation support on Mondays. Tuesdays through Fridays, we provide remediation, content mastery support, and organizational skills support. Um, during lunchtime, sometimes under the name of lunch buddies, but each school may call it something different. We also have active after-school groups where one-on-one or group support is currently being provided via Zoom. Our teachers, when they move from their synchronous lesson to their asynchronous lesson, are providing support remediation during class time. During Thursdays, our principal leadership group of 18 principals is meeting to norm our offerings across our 18 middle schools so that we can become more consistent in the offerings for all of our families and students. We're also taking the self-audit as an opportunity to see how we can learn from each other, learn the best practices from one end of the school division to the other end. And this is really one of the positive things that have occurred during the pandemic. Our principals have never been so collaborative, nor have our teachers, and I'm proud of all of them. Um, our school counselors continue to provide social emotional classroom lessons, small group Zoom sessions, and one-on-one Zoom sessions. Many of our schools have advisories with targeted classroom lessons and we have many virtual clubs at each of our schools. Our goal right now is to look at all of those opportunities and work to expand them to support the plan that our superintendent has put forward. And we're look forward to using the additional funds to provide additional compensation to our teachers and staff. So thank you, and it's my pleasure to introduce our High School Associate Superintendent, Mr. Michael Mulgrew.
Uh, thank you, members of the school board. Jason, would you mind going back because Bill and I have had the opportunity to have our slide up. But can you go back to the elementary slide just to make sure that people get a visual of what Ms. Hart was speaking about and have the opportunity to peruse it? Thank you very much, Jason. Do you mind moving it back to the, um, to the high school? Thanks, I appreciate it. At the high school level, we will offer targeted support to tutoring and hands-on support for students to experience success. We're planning on taking a more direct approach to some of our students, those who need assistance, by strongly encouraging them to take advantage of these opportunities. And parents will be informed of this. If a student needs assistance with the technology, we'll provide technology assistance, um, from qualified staff members. And if it's students who need academic remediation, they struggled with identified standards, we can provide individual support for those students. For example, if a student has not demonstrated mastery on five standards, it would only be those five standards the student would focus on. We would accept where they exhibited mastery and then we would work on those areas where they needed growth. As we've been doing for about 10 years now, if a student really struggles, for example, in Algebra I at semester, we can go ahead and start them over again in the Algebra I content. By creating additional sections, we'd like to thank Dr. Walz for authorizing that, where the student can retake the first portion of the course and obtain an Algebra I Part I credit by June. These students still have the opportunity to obtain a credit and the next year they would enroll in Algebra I, finish off the rest of the course, get the support they need, and get the full math credit. Staff would be compensated at the semester for the additional class. Counselors would be instrumental in providing emotional support for students in need as we, as well as advising students academically on ways to improve their grade. And for example, we may offer in-person instruction on Mondays for students. Um, we're very receptive to that. We're working with transportation like our other colleagues are as well. Simultaneous instruction can be provided for those students who cannot attend or opt to obtain support virtually. There can be two examples, one in the morning and then one in the afternoon to exist, to assist students. Staff again would be compensated for the planning time that they're giving up. After-school hours can exist, can consist of utilizing computer-based instruction to assist students. And I'm very proud to announce that over the holidays, um, back in December, the high schools worked with the Office of Student Management and Alternative Programs. We worked with Ms. Duggar, who's always a pleasure. And we delivered a Twilight Program where students could improve their grades. It was successful. More than 50 some students, almost 60 students benefited and improved their grades in math, and 40 some in other content areas. Um, we're planning on that, taking that successful pilot and multiplying it across the school division from now until we return. Thank you very much.
I will now call on Ms. Heebner to provide an update on the latest health metrics.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the school board, Dr. Walz. Tonight, our team will be sharing a streamlined update of the current metrics as well as some high-level data to provide an overview of the health in our community and the impact of COVID in our schools and in our departments. It's our goal to share data in the spirit of transparency and in a way that's meaningful to our decision-makers and to our community. Our team, with consultation from our outstanding team in the Office of Accountability, has organized some data to provide an overview at the county level. We continue to work to prioritize student learning in all we do. Our team knows that it is important for our staff and students to feel safe and confident in the learning environment, both in-person and at home. The safety and well-being of our staff and students continues to be our number one priority. Next slide, please. I realized that, oh. I will, um, Jason, can you go back a slide? I believe we may have skipped two. Nope, I'm sorry. We'll move forward and we'll have Ms. Polk talk to you about our current CDC metrics.
Thank you, Mrs. Heebner, Chairman Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walz. I will present the CDC Core Indicators. Um, as you can see on the first slide, we have the core indicators from, uh, January 6th, 2021 and a comparison with, uh, January the 11th. So the core indicators for Prince William, um, on January 6th shows the total number of new cases per 100,000 within the last 14 days. And that on January 6th was 831.2. The percentage of PCR tests that were positive during that same timeframe was 19.7. Um, then you look at January 11th of this year, the total number of new cases of, uh, per 100,000, uh, dropped slightly to 798.5. The percentage of PCR tests that are positive remained the same. Um, at the bottom, uh, we do have the link that will take you to the Virginia Department of Health site where you can see the core indicators for today. Uh, because of when we have to prepare the presentation, we're not able to have those numbers, um, in at that time. But you can certainly click on that link and it will take you directly there so you can see the core indicators for today. Of course, um, you know, we still need to continue to implement the key mitigation strategies and we continue to work on that, uh, on a routine basis. Next slide, please. This slide shows the CDC secondary indicators for Prince William or the northern, for the northern region, which we are part of. And again, we are looking at January 6th, 2021 with a comparison of January 11th, 2021. The secondary indicators first show the percent change of new cases per 100,000 during the last seven days compared with the previous seven days. And on January 6th, that number was 11.4%. The percentage of hospital, uh, beds, that inpatient beds that were occupied on that date was 83.7%. The percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region occupied patient, occupied by patients with COVID-19 was 17.4%. Looking at January 11th, the percent of change for the, um, cases per 100,000, um, during the last seven days compared with the previous seven days, you see a slight, uh, change and we're in the green. The percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region also decreased just slightly at, to 82.2%. And the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region that are occupied by patients with COVID uh, went up just slightly, 17.6%. Again, at the bottom of this slide, you can see the link that you can click on that will show you the numbers, the percentage, uh, for January the 12th, 2021. Um, this concludes, uh, my presentation on this portion of the, of the presentation. Thank you, Mrs. Heebner. I will turn it back over to Mrs. Heebner.
Okay, Jason, next slide, please. The Virginia Department of Health recommends that communities and schools use the CDC indicators for dynamic school decision-making to assess the risk and introduction and transmission of the SARS-CoV-19 virus in schools and to help inform decisions about school operations and necessary mitigation strategies. The guidance for the schools from VDOE and VDH remains at the moderate or high-risk level, which suggests that school divisions follow Phase II guidance for the Virginia Department of Health interim guidance for mitigation measures in K-2 school settings. Next slide, please. This slide again reviews some of the programmatic recommendations under Phase II, including the prioritization of learning for our vulnerable learners, in-person instruction for pre-K through third grade, as well as emphasizing the importance of restricting the mixing of classes and groups. As I have shared previously, I'd like to emphasize that virtual learning is also one of the options mentioned and while specific groups of students are identified for in-person learning, parents continue to have the ability to select the virtual option if that best meets their child's needs. And I will now turn the presentation over to Ms. Slater. Next slide. Oh, I, I take it back. I'm going to contain, I'm going to do this slide. So, um, here you will see an overview of the submission for our staff members of surveillance data. It's important to remember that a surveillance form does not necessarily indicate illness or a positive case. The form is completed when someone is a close contact or a case may be possible and requires further investigation. Many forms are submitted for those who are close contacts.
Well, excuse me one second, Ms. Heebner. I'm getting notified that the live stream is down. Is that correct, Mr. Stevens? Or folks in the back, can you just please check?
Uh, yes, Mr. Latif, uh, Chairman Latif, we're working on getting that back up right now.
Okay, thank you. Continue, Ms. Heebner.
Thank you.
So many forms are submitted, those who are, um, close contacts and have no symptoms. The chart includes individuals both in the virtual and in-person setting. Next slide, please.
Oh, okay, live stream is back up, folks.
Okay, so again, here is the same information, um, submissions for students. And again, the data reflects our virtual and in-person students and does not necessarily reflect illness. The surveillance forms allows us to follow up with individuals to determine if any action is needed. And now I would like to say, um, I would turn the presentation over to Ms. Slater. So next slide, please, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Heebner. Uh, good evening, Chair, good evening Chairman Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walz. My name is Becca Slater and I'm proud to serve as the Director of Student Services. Tonight, I will share some data with you and our community at large with the hopes of providing a clear picture of what we are seeing in our schools and departments in Prince William County schools. Please keep in mind that all data presented this evening is self-reported. During this presentation, you will hear me talk about positive cases and probable positive cases. Let me take a moment to explain the difference between the two. A positive case is one wherein the person has received a positive test result for COVID-19. A probable positive case is one wherein the person has specific symptoms consistent with COVID-19 and he or she has had close contact with someone with COVID-19 during the period in which that person was contagious. We act on both types of cases and treat them both as if they are a positive case. This first shot, slide shows the number of in-person positive and probable positive student cases within each month displayed as a percent of the total in-person population that was present in our school buildings during that month. The data for January is through January 9th. You will see here that as the number of students present in our buildings increased, the number of positive cases as a percent of the in-person population decreased. We credited the lack of a large increase in positive and probable positive cases to the work of our school staff and students in following mitigation strategies. You will also notice that between November 1 and January 9, we had a total of 116 positive cases for in-person students. Next slide, please. This slide shows the number of positive and probable positive cases for virtual students within each month displayed as a percent of the total student population which were accessing school virtually. The data for January is through January 9th. You will see here that the number of positive cases as a percent of the in-person population did increase slightly over time. We attribute this to the increased community spread. You will also notice that between November 1 and January 9, we had the total of 628 positive cases for students learning virtually. Next slide, please. This slide shows the number of positive cases for in-person staff members within each month displayed as a percent of the total in-person staff member population that was present in our school buildings and departments during those months. The data for January is again through January 9th. You will see here that as the number of staff members present in our buildings increased, the number of positive cases as a percent of the in-person population increased as well. Again, we attribute this to the increased community spread in Prince William County. You will also notice that between November 1 and January 9, we had a total of 262 positive cases for in-person staff members. Please note that beginning in January, we started collecting information about probable positive cases for staff members. Therefore, the January total does include positive and probable positive cases, both which we treat as a positive case. Next slide, please. This slide, it shows the number of positive cases for virtual staff members within each month displayed as a percent of the total staff member population. month displayed as a percent of the total staff member population which were working virtually. The data for January is again through January 9th. You will see here that the number of positive cases as a percent of the virtual staff member population did increase slightly over time. We attribute this to the increased community spread. You will also notice that between November 1 and January 9, we had a total of 128 positive cases for staff members working virtually. Please remember that beginning in January, we started collecting information about probable positive cases for staff members. Therefore, the January total does include positive and probable positive cases, both which we treat as a positive case. Next slide, please. This slide provides us with a different look at our school-level data. What you see here is the number of schools that fall within a percentage range for the number of in-person students who are considered a positive or probable positive case since the start of the school year as a percent of the current in-person student population. You can see that five schools fell in the range of 5% or greater of the in-person student population being considered a positive or probable positive case. It is important to note that these five schools have very low in-person enrollment, and the total number of cases represented in this data was nine. This is one example of why we look at data on a building-by-building basis instead of a set percentage threshold. For the other categories, you can see the number of schools that fall within each noted range. We have also provided the average in-person enrollment for all schools that fall within that range. The important point to take away from this slide is that as the in-person population of the buildings has increased, we have not seen corresponding increases in positive or probable positive cases. You can also see here, we have a large number of our schools that have had no in-person cases for students. We hope that this data provides you and the community at large with a clearer picture of the impact of COVID-19 positive and probable positive cases on our school buildings. This concludes our presentation. We thank you for your time this evening, and I want to emphasize that we have a team of professionals who monitor incoming data on a daily basis with the, with the goal of ensuring staff and student safety. Thank you.
Mrs. Heebner, did you have any other closing comments?
No, just thank you for all the work that our teachers and our administrators continue to do to keep our kids safe and help our kids learn. I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Walts.
Thank you very much. I would like to close my remarks by simply stating that the plan I provided to the school board is based on the best possible data and seeks to place safely and safety and health at the forefront of our plans. As the board knows from its own deliberations, this is not an easy balance. And I would just like to say, you know, as this pandemic moves forward and we have new things on the horizon at all, all the time, we've got mutations now and different variances in spread that are popping up in places, and the pressure continues to mount on all of us. And I just have a little something I'd like to share with you. Some students made this for me, and they presented it last year at a school board meeting, and I keep it behind me normally, you can see it up there. But I would just encourage folks, especially, you know, with the social media, if you could try to think about that just a little bit, because emotions are running high, and it's nobody's fault that we have this pandemic, and we want the best for the children, we want the best for our staff and our community, and people have some very different views on what that might be. But what would help the most, I think, would be to try to continue to partner and work together, see if we can dial back a little bit some of the high emotion, and we will continue to strive each and every day to do a better and better job educating all of our children. So, I stand ready, as does my team and our entire school division, to implement quickly and to the best of our ability any plan the school board should direct this evening. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Thank you, Mrs. Heebner. I think I'll start out with first by saying, I have to congratulate our entire staff, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, who have worked since the pandemic started, and that includes this past spring. The folks who delivered our food, who were able to deliver education in the spring, all of our folks who did everything they possibly could, and then through the summer and summer school. And, and it wasn't just, you know, as Dr. Walts pointed out the other evening, school didn't stop, you know, we, we continued to work, we went through summer school, we put together some programs, and we started with some in-person learning, and our virtual programming has been a constant evolving process towards continuous improvement. And, and I think all of you, senior staff, mid-level staff, managers, should all be commended and congratulated for the enormous work and the enormous pressure you've done this work under. I don't think the board can say enough about our teachers and our staff who've delivered time and time again on everything Dr. Walts has asked of them, their principals have asked of them, and I think this board and our community and parents have asked of them. And so, I don't think anyone should doubt the intentions that Dr. Walts made his comments with, nor the intentions that this board will act upon this evening regarding whatever we decide. I think it's really important, as Dr. Walts pointed out, to, you know, understand that we may have different opinions, we just need to work together to collaborate on them. And I'm going to start with a couple of questions, and I don't know who, who wants to take these, but in, in the spirit of the idea of collaborating, Dr. Walts, my understanding is that the governor and the Secretary of Education, Secretary of Health have said teachers get to the 1B category for vaccine, and I know you've commented on the vaccine. Where do we stand in Prince William County specifically on being able to implement the vaccine towards our in-person personnel as quickly as possible? Are there barriers? Are there maybe bureaucracies or things that we as a school board can do to help this along? Have you, in your communications with county staff in the Prince William area health district, if you remember, we passed a resolution last week encouraging you to reach out to them? Where are we specifically on that? And I ask this because, you know, as I drive in today, Alexandria on the radio was vaccinating teachers. Fairfax started vaccinating teachers yesterday. Inova Fairfax Hospital has opened up. My understanding, you can go to a link and sign up and try to get signed on if you're in the 1B category, if you're from any of the five health districts in the region. Where are we on? And, and I ask this because, you know, we can sit around and wait for the vaccine to be delivered, or we can go out and actively make this happen. Because if we can do that, that changes everything we're discussing here tonight. Can you, can you give us some insight onto your, in your conversations and maybe some, some insight on where we are with that, that you may not have discussed earlier in your vaccine discussion?
So, I'll lead off, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Heebner, and if you would like also to consider having Ms. Pope. Dr. Anshur is our public health contact. She, this is her district, and it's basically the, correct me if I'm wrong, but, Ms. Heebner, it's my understanding that she is working with the county, and they are in charge of coordinating the vaccination. Am I correct so far?
Yes, sir, you're doing well.
Okay. And then we also have provided assurances to the county. They originally came and mentioned possibly doing something at some selected or a selected school or two, and we immediately offered the Kelly Leadership Center, because again, you want big, large, open spaces, and we communicated that we would be willing to offer the Kelly Leadership Center ground floor free of charge. It has access before, we can have security before the regular workday begins, and after it's over, we, we have that now, and sometimes we go deep into the evening and even into the night, like when we have school board meetings. The main officer who sits at the desk, I spoke with today personally, he has received his first vaccination. He and his family also have had COVID, so, but they're getting better. And we have even more recently, there's been other possibilities, we've heard that they, part of the reason it was going slowly was they were trying to work out a memorandum of understanding with George Mason, and again, my response to that was, we can offer the Kelly Leadership Center with no memorandum of understanding. I say that without consulting Division Counsel, but I, I know that our Division Counsel is such that they can tool up to something almost on a dime, and they have an excellent relationship with the legal department in county government, so I have every confidence that that would not be an obstacle. Then it came to our attention that they are looking at some schools and also looking at some of our nurses who have a certification to be out there on the front line. And again, our nursing services are off the chart. They're the leaders in school nursing services in the state of Virginia and in much of the country, and many of them have the certification to give the shots themselves. So, we have made all of those offerings. Ms. Heebner, I believe you, and I'm not sure, I think Ms. Pope, Ms. Bellamy may have been on the most recent call, but could you supply any additional information over and above what, what I may have shared?
Thank you, Dr. Walts. As you add that, Ms. Heebner, maybe you can also address the, the, the point that there is tremendous frustration in the community regarding the delivery of vaccines when we compare Prince William County to Fairfax. And I understand Dr. Anshur was at the BOCs meeting this afternoon, answering questions regarding these same issues. You know, I don't know if you've brought up, and you may be able to tell, can we deliver vaccines in our schools by our nurses to our own staff? Can we encourage the health district to make available nighttime, evening, and weekends when our teachers are teaching virtual, and as you've heard from many of our teachers, it's, it's very tough to get away. You know, they're watching their children at home as well as teaching virtually. How are they going to get a vaccine? My understanding, Prince William Health District doesn't even offer the vaccines on the weekends. Fairfax is doing it on the weekends. Where are we, and are we as a school division advocating for our employees as hard as we can, or are we just accepting what they tell us?
Dr. Latif, we are working very closely with Dr. Anshur, the health district, and with the county. Bright and early this morning, I was on a call with Mr. Wallingford, looking and proposing facilities and ways that we could possibly be helpful. We stand ready to help in any way. Yes, we are advocating, I know that Ms. Pope and Ms. Bellamy recognize the importance and the skills that our nurses have in order to support this effort. We stand ready for next steps from the county to do whatever we can to move this along. We want our staff vaccinated as soon as possible, sir.
So, standing ready is one thing, but is there a way we can, I mean, is there, I mean, I can't, so I'm going to give you an example, because, you know, the, the 1A category were physicians, folks at the hospitals and the staff. And again, in Fairfax, they delivered it to their entire hospital staff, affiliated physicians and unaffiliated physicians by January 3rd, almost everyone got it. We didn't start doing, in Prince William County, even our surgical staff in the hospital and the outpatient surgery centers until almost a week later. And it required a lot of, let's just say nicely, advocacy in the strongest of terms. And we are continuing to face that with the Prince William Health District on even getting the rest of our folks in the physicians' offices, healthcare workers, nursing homes, we are struggling to even get those on schedule. So, we're, I mean, you know, we, we are behind here where Fairfax is. And so, you know, I, I think what I'm asking you is, are we just going to sit and accept what they tell us, or are we going to really push hard to advocate? I mean, does the board need to do something more than what we did last week? I mean, I have sent an email to Dr. Anshur, I have talked to Senator Servel, Senator Peterson, I have, you know, the board has reached out to Senator McPike. We have, we have done everything we possibly can, but we need this to happen faster in our county. And I understand the George Mason memorandum of understanding. I, I find this first and foremost just, just outrageous in the sense that we, we weren't ready, you know, we didn't have a memorandum of understanding already typed up and ready to go months in advance, but to accept people from the Woodbridge District on Route 1 in the highest ZIP code in the state, to have to drive to the George Mason campus to get a vaccine is, is concerning. And I know Dr. Walts said we're going to try to open up more sites, but where are we? Are we, are they being as aggressive as possible?
Well, again, let me just say that we have offered them not only facilities, but actual people power, nurses who can give those vaccines right there in our schools. I, I don't know, Mrs. Pope, do you have anything else you would like to add? And then, Mr. Wallingford, I know there's been some preliminary conversation about even offering our stadiums, and to the best of my knowledge, we're, we're trying to do whatever they want to expedite this, but I'll start first.
Dr. Walts, I, we really appreciate that, and we want to hear you say that, and we want to know that, are they responding to your offers of help?
Well, let's start with Ms. Pope.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. One of the things I'd like to share, Dr. Anshur shared with me that they are working with Inova, because they realize Fairfax has been able to, to deliver the vaccine more rapidly than they have here in our county. And so, she's working with Inova, and I believe the plan is that Inova may be the provider that will be able to vaccinate more of our, our school staff. I don't have the details on when that will start, but she did say that as soon as they can get that set up, that information will be sent out so that staff will know when and where they can get the vaccine. So, I mean, I believe that, you know, we're doing, we're not sitting and waiting for them to tell us. They certainly need the help of the school nurses. We have at least 28 of our school nurses who are trained medical reserve corps volunteers. Many of them have already given vaccine, and many of our school nurses have received their vaccine. So, the school nurses are ready and willing to assist as they can. I know Dr. Latif asked the question, could we have the vaccine and our nurses deliver? I think that is something that's a little bit more difficult, because we don't have the capability to, to first of all procure the vaccine, and nor do we have the ability to store the vaccine. And it would not, it would not only be procurement of vaccine and storage, then we would have to have everything else that goes along with that. So, I don't know that we could take that on, but our nurses who are trained MRC volunteers, and they do have to get signed off to administer vaccines, and we have maybe one that is going to do it on Friday, but the others are already approved to do that. They are ready, and they have assisted already, and they're more than willing to assist. So, I don't believe that we're sitting and waiting. I think it's a matter of the coordination with Inova by the Prince William Health District so that they can assist in this effort, so that we can get our staff vaccinated as early as possible. And they have started with the 1B phase, and the childcare and K through 12, K through 12 teachers and staff are in that category. So, I don't have the exact date and time that they will start, but I would anticipate that we would have some more information this week that we could share.
Mr. Wallingford, did you have anything to add on facilities?
Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts, thank you, Dr. Walts. We have had several meetings over the past week. We've offered up as many high school football stadiums as they can utilize. Like Dr. Walts said, we've offered up the Kelly Center a week or two ago, and we've also offered to them facilities currently in two of our middle schools. To your question, Dr. Latif, we are being pretty assertive about wanting to get things moving, and we will be meeting again as many times as we need to, and we will continue to be assertive. And we will continue to be assertive about trying to get not only our faculty and staff inoculated, but also other citizens who live in Prince William County.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Mr. Iman, since you're on the call and you announced your retirement today, let me first congratulate you on your announcement for your retirement. But that gets you this question. One of your tremendous successes here along with Dr. Walts has been the development of Spark, our foundation, our educational foundation that supports our school division with business interests. Centerra Hospital and Novant UVA are both part of Spark. My understanding during today's meeting with Dr. Anshur and the B O C S is that she had told the B O C S that we ought to push the hospitals to do more community delivery of the vaccines, similar to the way Inova Fairfax is. Have we had any relationships or communication with the hospitals to see where they are on, I was at Novant earlier today operating, and I know they talked about, there were emails flying out that they will start with community inoculations, but can we communicate with them to say, look, you know, we need to prioritize our in-person teachers? I mean, we have 7,000 on that slide. It said 7,000 people working in the buildings. Fairfax has nobody teaching right now and hasn't had a whole lot going on, and they're vaccinating before us. And so the frustration this board is having, and just in conversation and phone calls and the B O C S is having, is tremendous. Mr. Iman, do you, can we, have we made any, have we started any communicating with our hospitals on this?
Well, Mrs. Hebner might be the best one to answer that question, but I will say this, Dr. Latif.
You have all the pull, though. You have all the pull, Mr. Iman. You have all the pull. They love you. You have all the pull.
Let me finish my comment. Thank you. What I was going to say is that from a Spark perspective, I'm happy to reach out formally and very strongly to our contacts with our Spark members to see if that could be of assistance. But in terms of any direct conversations that have taken place prior to me doing that, other staff might be able to answer that question. Mrs. Hebner, I'm not sure that you're in a position to do that.
Mrs. Hebner, have you had any communication with the hospitals, or have we heard anything through them?
No, sir. Our process is to follow the health district and the guidance that we're receiving from the county. We certainly have great partnerships through our Spark Foundation. Mr. Guilfoyle oversees that. And so to my knowledge, we're just following.
So one thought could be, Dr. Walts, to consider tomorrow morning or this evening, reaching out to the hospitals to see if there's a way we can prioritize our teachers through their system. Dr. Anshur did say in the B O C S meeting, and maybe you can reach out to Dr. Anshur first as well, to say, hey, look, should we be reaching out to the hospitals? Because they have the needles and the nurses. As Mrs. Polk said, they have the stuff. So needles and nurses are over at the hospital. They have set up facilities, and they've been rolling it through Novant and Centerra now for a few weeks. Inova Fairfax has an incredible operation going over there. And we ought to be modeling everything we do here in the county on the success they've had. They're delivering, you know, enormous vaccines throughout the day without wasting any doses. So anyways, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions on this topic with the vaccine? Otherwise, I think we can move on. Ms. Jesse?
I am frustrated because it would seem that we would have a plan. Who is the point of contact? Who is our, a week ago, I called the Secretary of Education because I was very frustrated. I wanted help. And he said, Louis, don't worry. Well, he knows about Louis because he's from Prince William. He wasn't that involved. But he said, help is coming. And so at the last board meeting, we talked about the possible availability of the vaccine. Dr. Walts, I'm just curious, how often do you and the pandemic team get together? It seems like we're flowing from one person to the other. And it seems to me by now, we should have a plan in place. Who's the point of contact? Who's going to contact the hospitals? When you and your team meet with, because we're going from one person to the other, who is the real point of contact here? We keep floating it around. Who is the point of contact? Because the teachers, Fairfax has no kids in the building, and they're getting vaccinated. We have 7,000 people in the building, which I am really concerned about, and we don't seem to have a plan. So tell me, why can't we get something together to send out to teachers to let them know what our plan is for them? And again, I want to ask you, how often do you meet with that pandemic team? And who on this group of people, who is the lead person who should be doing this? I just need a point of contact.
Well, here's a couple of different things. First of all, the last time I met with our team was yesterday.
How often have you met with them?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, Dr. Walts, I have to ask this question. How often have you met with them? Because I have some metrics here that, knowing those metrics, I'm not sure why we brought kids back in. How often do you meet with that team?
I get feedback from their meetings every Monday or Tuesday. Their meetings are the worst of the week. And then the contact is the leader of our team, that's Denise Hebner. She's the number one person. But again, I'd ask Mrs. Polk to please correct me if I'm wrong, or Ms. Hebner, but this is not under our control. This is not a plan that we make. This is a plan that we assist, that the county government and the Virginia Health District is in charge. So, Ms. Polk, if you could please, if I've said anything that's not correct, but coming from a military background, my understanding is they call the shots. Please, please inform.
Dr. Walts, I don't need anything from Mrs. Polk. I just need to know.
I am asking her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. But, Dr. Walts, I want to know what.
I am asking Mrs. Polk, my staff, to help me respond to your question.
Yes, Ms. Jesse, allow Ms. Polk to answer the question there that Dr. Walts is directing her to. Thank you. Mrs. Polk?
Thank you. Yes, thanks, Dr. Latif. Okay, Dr. Walts is correct. The vaccine is under the control of the Virginia Department of Health. And the public health district is receiving their guidance from Virginia Department of Health on how they are to roll it out. And Dr. Anshur from day one has always felt strongly that the school staff needed to get the vaccine as quickly as possible. And she is working very hard to ensure that happens. But she has been given an order of priority in terms of who receives the vaccine. So we don't really have a lot of control over that. Certainly, we're working very closely with her. But I would also like to say that one of the things that we need to understand, we're in Prince William County. Fairfax County has five district offices, and so they can administer vaccine from all of their offices, which they do routinely for all of the vaccines. And we have one Prince William Health District office. This is a tremendous thing for them to undertake for any of the health districts or health departments in the state or anywhere in the country. And I do believe that they're working as hard as they can to try to get this done. And she has given us the information that she has. As quickly as we can get the details, we will certainly share that. We have not reached out to the hospital. Certainly, if that is what you're asking us to do, we can certainly pursue that and find out what we can. But the rollout and the management of the vaccine is really a public health issue. It is not the school division. But I am more than willing to do whatever is asked so that we can gather more information for our staff and to make sure that the school board is aware of what the plan is.
Okay, I'm, Mrs. Polk and Dr. Walts.
Ms. Williams has a question, Ms. Jesse. I'm sorry, we'll move on to Ms. Williams has a question.
I'm sorry, I'm not finished with my question. I'm staying, Dr. Walts. Just let me finalize this, please.
Sure.
Well, Dr. Walts, and Mrs. Hebner, what I'm asking you is that if you could develop a plan and a point of action so that we could send something out to teachers and staff so they know where we are. If we can't do anything with the hospitals and the other people involved, that's one thing. But I need to know, what is our coordinated plan? And, Dr. Walts, I keep coming back to you because, I'm sorry, I just put you in charge, and I didn't mean to be rude to you at all, but we, when I talked to the Secretary of Education, I said the following. We are the only school system that have kids in Northern Virginia that I know of that has all these kids in school. We're bringing kids back. So I asked him, can Prince William be a priority? Is there some way that we could be a priority? I don't know how you do that, but the teachers are concerned because we're the people not only having kids, but you brought more kids in yesterday. So I'm just wondering, we could, I'm not sure how you do it, but is there some way that we could establish ourselves as a priority and get something out to teachers and staff in the next day or so to let them know where we are? Can we do that?
I'm going to, I'm going to try this one more time. So again, we take our lead from the health district. We tell our staff everything we know as soon as we can. We cannot tell them a plan until the health district tells us what they are planning to do. We can offer assistance in manpower, woman power. We can offer assistance in facilities, which we have done. When I met with our team yesterday, I asked them, is there anything else you need to know? Is there anything else I need to know to be able to help?
So until we get that, can we, down the road, we're going to discuss this. What I'm getting to is this, if we can't get a coordinate, if we can't control this, we need to relook at bringing kids back into the building until, that's my point, that we need to tell teachers something. I'm not saying for you to control it, but to say we can't control it, this is what we're doing, to get it to teachers, and/or we need to look at why are we bringing kids back in the building? That's my last point. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I was just going to reiterate what Dr. Walts said. Basically, I mean, I watched the B O C S meeting today, and it's very evident, I mean, I know that, I feel frustrated as a board member and as a parent. You definitely want to get a vaccine. We want to be able to vaccinate our staff. We want to expedite the situation. But it became clear from watching the B O C S meeting that Prince William County does not have enough staff to even implement giving vaccines by comparison to Fairfax. I think this, I think Dr. Anshur said somewhere tonight, they have a total of 12 nurses, but you have to have a skilled nurse, which brings the number down to, I think she said, four. And they're still working the county, at the county level, on, you know, getting other skilled staff members to be able to deliver the vaccine. And it was mentioned that our school division has offered skilled nurses, that our nurses have been vaccinated. But this is something that is out of our control. I just don't want it to get lost with the public because we're often compared to Fairfax, that we have any sort of ability at all to do anything more than what we're doing in order to get our staff vaccinated. Because sometimes, you know, when people get comparing, they're like, well, Fairfax is doing this, and their teachers. But I just want to be perfectly clear that the school division, it's out of our hands, period. There's nothing else that we can do. I totally agree with Chairman Latif and advocating for us to push harder and to do everything that we can, but we can't do anything according to tonight's information. And I would highly encourage the public to watch the B O C S meeting that occurred today at 2:00, because this topic was discussed at length. Even our counterparts on the Board of County Supervisors were pushing Dr. Anshur to try to see if we could get our teachers who are currently in the building expedited on the list to vaccinate. And the answer was basically, no. There's a state list, and they have to go according to that. And we're doing everything in our county, but we're not the same size as Fairfax. And we definitely, just like within our school division, at the county level, are not adequately staffed to handle every crisis that comes our way. So I just don't want anybody to be misled. I want it to be perfectly clear that this is not a school option. We don't have any control over that. And I don't want anybody to be misled tomorrow or any further citizen comment times and thinking that we're not doing enough or that we don't care. It's definitely, this board has pushed our counterparts on the B O C S. We're pushing our state-level legislators, everybody that we can possibly think of that could be influenced to help us. But this is a state top-down decision and a personnel, a matter of how many people are actually qualified to be able to deliver a vaccine. Because just because you're a nurse, according to Dr. Anshur today, doesn't mean you're skilled to deliver the vaccine. So I think that's also very important to mention. Thank you, Dr. Latif.
So, Dr. Walts, thank you for reminding us about how this works. I think one thing that, and like I said, we should reach out to Dr. Anshur because she did say that the B O C S should push the hospitals to do more. Maybe we can reach out to the hospitals and provide the same sort of things you've offered to the Prince William Health District to say, can we help you? Can we provide you manpower, woman power? Can we provide you facilities to the hospitals? To also say, we're willing to work with you all in the same way we would work into the Prince William Health District. It's something to think about. The other thing that I think it's important for everyone to know, and, you know, Fairfax has been able to somehow get either through their list faster or prioritize teachers quicker than we have. So that's a question that I have for Dr. Anshur that I will be posing to her directly. But Surgeon General Adams today said that you should treat the vaccine, and this is federal guidance now. And so when, as you all have your conversations with the health district, the guidance from the Surgeon General was, look, for example, in 1B, you might have some priority categories. On an airplane, you have priority boarding. Priority boarders get on. But someone gets in their mix who wasn't priority, they'll let them sit, especially if another priority person is in the restroom or something. So you let them have the seat. You give them the shot. We're not going to, you know, we have to use those shots. We can't throw them away. So in a sense, is Fairfax and Alexandria doing a better job of, you know, distributing the vaccine? And so as we have these discussions, I would hope that you would convey to the health district in your meetings, Ms. Hebner, that this board has concerns about new federal guidance regarding priority. We want to prioritize our teachers. We are the largest employer in the county. We have a priority in that we have, as a school division, put students in buildings sooner, staff in buildings sooner than the entire region. And I think this board, just collectively, you know, you can sense the frustration. And as Dr. Walts points out, you're doing as much as you can. The second thing I would ask you to do is let us not get caught up being not ready. Meaning, do you have your list of tier ones that are in, they need vaccinated first? Do you have our in-person list of those people who should be vaccinated second? Do you have our list of those we're going to ask to return sooner, fourth, fifth grade? Regardless of which plan is chosen, Dr. Walts has laid out a plan of an order of grades to come in. Those should be prioritized because they're coming in sooner. Are we ready with those lists? Ms. Hebner?
We actually had people over the holiday working deep into the night on putting those priority lists together. Either Ms. Hebner or Mr. Wallingford, and while you're figuring out which person will do that, I just have one other thing that I'm trying to get hot off the press here. Again, I just want to be clear, this, we can communicate as much, you know, desire to have these vaccines, but we are not in charge of this. But we did a special issue of the communicator to every employee in the school division yesterday. The joint, county joint information center issued the press release below regarding the planned distribution of vaccines. The governor has prioritized teachers and education staff around 1B of the vaccination. The Prince William County Health District announced on Monday that Prince William County Health District is transitioning into Phase 1B. The health district must complete the employment groups in the order that they are listed in Virginia's COVID-19 vaccination campaign. At this time, police, fire, hazmat, and corrections, and homeless shelters come prior to childcare and K-12 teachers and staff. PWCS is in close contact with the health district to provide the information. They need to contact staff when the vaccine is available via appointment. PWCS is also making space available within dedicated locations in PWCS to administer the vaccine without disrupting instruction and in a safely mitigated manner. We will share updates as we receive them by the county. And then there's a whole lot of other information. I can keep on reading, but that went to every employee yesterday.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Very important to point that out. We do appreciate that, and I did see that yesterday, and I thank you. And if Ms. Hebner or Mr. Wallingford can answer, are we ready to do what we can do when it comes our time to step up?
So, yes, sir, Dr. Latif, Mr. Wallingford, and several of our team members from Human Resources, Joe McElanda and Dr. Eagle, over the holidays, we did start organizing. Our information is ready to go, to be provided so that we can get, excuse me, our staff and teachers vaccinated as soon. We have taken into consideration who needs to prioritize.
and teachers vaccinated as soon. We have taken into consideration who needs to be prioritized, be prioritized. And we are mobilizing. Ms. Polk and Ms. Bellamy have been incredibly thorough and thoughtful about how we can use our M R C nurses, how we can support this. We have offered facilities. 6:00 AM, we are in contact with Dr. Anser. 8:00 AM, we're in contact with the county this morning. It remains at the forefront of all of our thoughts. Anything that we can do to move it forward, we want our teachers vaccinated. I'm not sure if Mr. Wallingford has anything he'd like to add in his work with the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Heebner. Yes, just one or two thoughts. Dr. Latif, to your question directly, the answer is yes. We will do anything we can when we get the opportunity to move. I can assure you, Mrs. Jesse, there's frustration on everybody's part, and we are doing everything humanly possible to get this vaccine moving.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for that.
Yes, and one final thing I'd just like to say is, when we work on these emergency situations, we have a longstanding reputation in working with the county. When something is in their court and they say jump, we say how high? We put up emergency shelters on a dime, literally within a matter of hours. Whole high schools set up when we had the flood in Woodbridge. So we are very equipped to respond. We simply are not in charge. That being said, I also want to say that we have a high-level employee on the Board of Novant, and we will make contact in the morning. I just want to make sure that we are not perceived as interfering in some way or adding confusion to the way the Health Department is working, since they are the lead agency. Thank you.
Wonderful, Dr. Waltz. I think that is really important, the way you talked about that. I can't tell you how much I agree with you on that, and I can't thank you for the confidence you've given to the community that we are ready when it comes our time to deliver what we need for our employees. And, you know, I think the board would just reiterate, and we appreciate your efforts to reaching out to the hospitals in the right way, right? I mean, we're not asking you to circumvent anything, but just recognize that we want you to lobby for the vaccine like we lobby in Richmond, in the same way. We're just going to bother everyone and call them every day until, you know, we get our turn. And that does work. That's why we spend money lobbying people in Richmond. We're gonna, you know, spend some time lobbying some folks here to get our vaccines. So all appreciated.
We have made a high-level content, contact with Novant in the last few minutes.
Wonderful, sir. Thank you so much. Ms. Jesse?
Dr. Waltz, please. I apologize for being so adamant about this. I will reiterate the same thing I said to the Secretary of Education. We are the largest system, but we have chosen to put 77,000 people in the building. So these other people who are getting vaccine don't have people in the building. And that's why I'm so emotional about this, that we need to, I don't know, we don't need to be pushy, but I'm just asking you to make an effort because we made a choice to put teachers in the buildings. The other people don't have people in the building. Thank you.
Your point is well-taken, and I couldn't agree more.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And well, then, that wraps that up. Dr. Waltz, did we finish your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry where we're at. All right, next, so if there's no further questions on the vaccine, I think we've covered the vaccine. I think we covered it in the context of our resolution last week. And so I think we've moved on off of that. So at this point, I don't think we need to go there any further. Next, we need to consider, you know, we had 10 hours of meeting last week on, after hearing Dr. Waltz's plan. And, you know, we went late into the night and all of us got a little punchy, and it was difficult to sort of start thinking about where we'd like to go. What I'd like to do this evening is to offer a resolution that we would debate and then take a vote on. And with that resolution, I will offer it and then immediately tell you why I offered it. And then we move to a discussion of the resolution. And once the resolution has been discussed, we should take a vote. What I would ask the board members to do is just ask the questions, if there are any, that you didn't ask the evening of last week, anything that may be new, and then make your point about where you stand on the resolution and why. And then we would consider making our vote. I'm gonna ask B. Simpson.
Did we receive a copy?
We're gonna put it in board docs now. It's gonna go up now and then we'll take, well, what we'll do is we'll have Ms. Simpson put it up now, take a 10-minute break for the folks that are here, and while you, while it's going up, you can take a look at it, and then I'll offer the motion upon return of the break. It is 8:06, 8:06 now, we'll return at 8:20? 8:20, thank you. If the board members at home can update their board docs by hitting F5, you'll see the fresh resolution. I apologize for the delay here. We were delayed a bit.
I can't hit F5 and see it at home. Is there a way for us to see it at home?
Do you see a little circle on top of your screen? You can hit it and refresh for your board docs?
Where is this? I can go to board docs.
Okay, go, if you go to board docs now, it might be, you might be good if you're just signing into board docs now, right? Where do you have it at?
I'm going back, I'm going back to board docs.
Okay, good. It should be there, under 5.01 at the very bottom, motion and voting.
Okay.
We're cleaning up. A couple other sentences there. It'll change once again, just. My apologies on this to the folks watching from home. We're just cleaning up the language here. We had it at a D somewhere. Okay, hit F5 again. But I'll read it also. It's pretty similar to what you see at home, folks. Okay, everyone's seated, everyone's back. Okay. I will make a motion that the Prince William, I'll request that the Prince William County School Board consider that the Prince William County School Board modify the superintendent's phased-in return-to-learning plan as presented by the superintendent and approved by the school board on October 21, 2020, to delay for an additional month the proposed return dates for all students above the 2nd and 3rd grade level in order to continue to monitor applicable health metrics and vaccine distribution. That the board receives information regarding the feasibility of these new dates at its February 17, 2021 school board meeting, and further that in the interim, the superintendent shall retain the authority to take such measures as he considers necessary to protect the health of students and staff, including measures needed to respond to the impact of the pandemic on individual schools.
Dr. Latif?
Yes.
Just for clarification, this is a motion, not a resolution. You used the term resolution earlier.
Oh, sorry. So I move, so let me, I move that the Prince William County School Board modify the superintendent's phased-in return-to-learning plan as presented by the superintendent and approved by the school board on October 21, 2020, to delay for an additional month the proposed return dates for all students above the 2nd and 3rd grade level in order to continue to monitor applicable health metrics and vaccine distribution. That the board receives information regarding the feasibility of these new dates at its February 17, 2021 school board meeting, and further that in the interim, the superintendent shall retain the authority to take such measures as he considers necessary to protect the health of students and staff, including measures needed to respond to the impact of the pandemic on individual schools. Can I have a second?
A second?
There's a second by Ms. Zargarpur. At this point, we'll move to discuss, and I will just give my sort of reasoning for this, and then we'll go around the room and hear from others. So I put forward this motion with these things in mind. As the superintendent has pointed out, as the governor has pointed out, there is surging, there's a potential that we surge in mid-February, and that is concerning, and so we will continue to monitor that. And so for those reasons, I accept the idea to delay from our planned return in early February for the middle and high school levels and moving them to basically March. I believe the vaccine changes everything. I believe the vaccine distribution, I am hopeful that, as the governor has set a goal, that all teachers in 1B be done by March 1. The Secretary of Education has stated that. The counties and the health districts are moving towards that. The question is whether we get to there or not. We can reassess on February 17. We'll see how much we've been able to do, and if it makes sense, then at that point, and discuss at that point where the health metrics are to decide to go in in March. The criticism for this will be, Dr. Latif, you're setting up another meeting to have another discussion for another set of dates, and you're going to let down our students or families again. That is possibly a way to look at it. I understand that. I think this year and this entire pandemic has been one set of concerns and promises that we may or may not have been able to deliver. And that is a concern. But we are also reaching the last semester. We are reaching the last few weeks. And my concern is that with the superintendent's recommendation to go till April 27 for the high school level, that that just leaves us six to seven weeks for students, which is about 12, 14, 16 days of in-person activity. And I believe we can do it sooner. I believed we could do it before the vaccine. I believed we could do it before the peak. I believed we could do it sooner. And so the vaccine provides and changes everything. It makes everything possible, allows us to get our tier ones sorted out. That helps with staffing. It allows us to help our in-persons who are currently in now, and it allows us to help those who then will be coming on a scheduled program. So as you, as you look at the schedule, if we delay a month, 4th and 5th grade will come in next, and then the 6th, the different houses. So you hope to have those groups who are planning to come in sooner vaccinated sooner. I also believe that by delaying it one month and having time to discuss it on February 17 gives us time, time to not make a decision to put this off in the future so far as three months. If in February, things are not where we want them to be with the vaccine, and we have to then delay to possibly the first day back from spring break or the later dates in April, depending on where we are with the vaccine, I will accept and look at, and have the board consider it at that time. I think that makes sense. But to, my concern is to push off to the end of April is, I think, just too far. And I think we should be able to get the things we need to get done, done. VEA has committed to, you know, the teachers have said they'll come back to work, you know, hopefully, once they're vaccinated, and we'll be able to vaccinate folks, and especially our tier ones. And so I'm very hopeful, and that's why I offer this resolution. I believe we need to, I'm sorry, this is why I recommend this motion, is because I believe very strongly that we can do this. I believed we can do this from the very beginning. I believe we've had the infrastructure, the money, the potential to get folks in person sooner. Remember, those who stay virtual remain virtual. They will always have that choice. But for those students and families who want to return, I think we'll be able to have that ability. And so for those reasons, I offer my motion, my motion, right. And so I will end with that, and then I'll take, Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. This is gonna probably be my only comment in here since I'm gonna speak a little longer. I wanted to write more of a speech incorporating some of the comments that were said during citizen comment time, in general, also emails I've received. So in my opinion, we as a board need to lead. We do not have the votes at this point, as you said, to support the current plan and/or Dr. Waltz's proposed plan moving forward. Like you said, Dr. Latif, if we wait until the end of April to return our secondary students to in-person learning, then I see no point in even returning to school with only six weeks remaining in the school year. What would be the point of changing the entire year for only six weeks of in-person instruction? We need to embrace the how. How can we get our students back into our schools with the adopted hybrid model? Tonight, we heard Dr. Latif propose ideas on how working, on working on the how, and working on ways to offer our students who want it to be the option to return to in-person learning as soon as possible. And just tonight, I've already had emails from my citizens. I've already encouraged them to please contact your member of the Board of County Supervisors and help expedite this process and put some pressure on our county health department. Although I was a teacher, I also represent all constituents within the Potomac District. This includes students, parents, and teachers. Many constituents want to remain all virtual. Several parents are advocating for immediate in-person learning. And finally, many families have opted for virtual but believe families should have the choice moving forward. Why are we not providing those families who want the in-person option the opportunity to phase into a hybrid plan? Yes, we need to ensure our faculty that we have the proper procedures, mitigation strategies, and P P E for the hybrid model, but we also need to prioritize our increasingly at-risk tier-one employees with the virtual option. But we also need to come up with a solution that looks out for all students. I do care about the safety and well-being of our teachers. I have continually worked with another board member to require a countywide P P E audit. I have advocated for increased resources for our special education teachers, and most recently, requested that increasingly at-risk tier-one teachers be provided the option of all virtual before bringing in secondary students. My advocacy included providing principals the flexibility to accommodate their increasingly at-risk teachers with the virtual option. While advocating for our staff, I have also supported a hybrid plan since the onset of our discussion back on July 15 to better support students due to the rising mental health issues, suicides, and issues pertaining to social and emotional learning. I have received several emails, texts, and social media messages indicating that teachers are disappointed in me because I am a former teacher, and I should have a better understanding of what our teachers are confronted with. I agree, as one of the former educators on this board, I believe I have a duty of working with my colleagues to make them aware of issues facing our teachers. Yes, I taught for six years over eight years ago. Along with being a former teacher, I am also the husband of a current teacher in Prince William County. She and I personally disagree on some issues about the return-to-learn plans discussed over this year. This inundates me, and this is my life right now. This doesn't stop when I walk out of this building. There's a personal connection. My friends from eight years ago, beyond when I first moved down here, many of them are still teachers and administrators in this county. I am also the father, I'm also the father, a father. And as a father, I witnessed the benefits of in-person learning for both of my sons. The teachers at Ashland Elementary are doing an outstanding job, and I feel completely confident in the mitigation strategies and the leadership of Dr. Jacks and his entire staff. I am also a very hands-on person. Before COVID-19, I was probably visiting schools and attending events more than any-
Schools and attending-
Oh.
Oh.
Mr. Stevens, we have a little bit of echo or background.
Man, I was on a roll.
Reverb, whatever that's called, reverb.
I said, it says I'm also hands-on. I almost said I'm also handsome.
That is true. That's true. That's the most true caption I've seen all night.
I am also a very hands-on person. Before COVID-19, I was probably visiting schools and attending events more than any other member on this board. Before the break, I requested the right, before this holiday break, I requested the right to join two different kindergarten classrooms and spend my entire day on two separate days observing concurrent instruction. Again, I stayed in two different buildings the entire day, from the moment the kids arrived to the moment that they walked the kids out to the bus. I took two days off of work, and I wanted to see this in action, and I will continue doing this because our pre-K to 3 teachers are in the building. I also want to mention, I wore the proper- the proper PPE gear. I wore an N95 mask the entire time. I stayed six feet away, did all the same things that the teachers had done because I wanted to live this experience. Both teachers that I observed did an outstanding job, and I was very confident in the mitigation and the amount of PPE provided in the school building. I do have to be transparent, though, and acknowledge, this is not easy for our educators. At one point, I was asked by one of the kindergarten teachers to sit in front of the students on a Zoom camera and read a story to the kids, while having 700 kids, we call roomies, versus zoomies, also see the book about Christmas. So while having to maintain the attention of my kids in my Zoom room, while also enter, in a sense, engaging the kids in the classroom, it was a completely different experience. Trying to manage my neck back forth, try to keep the kids engaged in both environments, that is not easy, and I fully acknowledge that that is definitely a difficult process, but both of our, both the educators I watched had done an amazing job, and I believe we can get in that direction. Yes, it will be difficult, but it is possible to do concurrent instruction. Many have stated that board members have been inconsistent in their views over the last eight months. I have supported the hybrid plan since July 15th, where I introduced a motion to commence the school year under a 50/50 model. Flash forward to October, I joined a minority of my board members to oppose Dr. Walt's presented timeline. I have shown a consistent position for a hybrid model, and I have not been unwilling, and I have not been unwilling to counter Dr. Walt's plan. I will continue to support our tier-one teachers with the all-virtual option until fully vaccinated, as I have promised to do in my positions. I believe that a potential March to return-to-learn timeline, instead of waiting until the end of April, would benefit in the following ways. This compromise supports students' learning, two weeks of marking period 3 before the end of a break to help students. Instead of a few weeks, the entire fourth quarter would be available for those students who elect to return to a hybrid plan. I do want to emphasize that our teachers do want to return when it is safe. I disagree with our governor because a return-to-learning began back in September, and will not only commence when he provides more guidance on when students need to return to in-person learning. Our teachers have been teaching since day one. This timeline discussed tonight provides additional time for vaccinations of our school staff, prioritizing, hopefully, increasing, increasingly at-risk tier-one employees. If these increasingly at-risk tier-one employees are unable to get vaccinated before this timeline, then we as a school system need to provide them the virtual option until they're, until they're able to complete this process. It also gives time to reduce community transmission. Returning in March, hopefully, also helps with the mitigation due to warmer weather. Schools will have more options to support safe procedures for meal service, performing arts, phys ed, and other programs. At the same time, we need to come together as a community to reduce the transmission. We need to adhere to social distancing guidelines to reduce our spread and positivity rate. We are all stakeholders. We all see the importance of having in-person learning for student success. We also all know the benefits to our community when parents and families can participate fully in their careers. It is our collective responsibility to improve the metrics so our students and staff can return safely. As a community, we have said, opening schools for in-person learning is a top priority. Our actions need to match that priority. I support this timeline because I believe, as a community, we can get our metrics down. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. As I see it, there are three basic options that we have, that we could adopt, and this one that we are considering right now, this motion, makes the most sense to me, and I'll tell you why. It modifies the return dates to one month in the future, which gives us time to monitor vaccinations and our progress towards our goal of vaccinating all of our personnel. It also gives us time to continue to monitor the data. As we've seen with COVID, it's a, it's a, not a perfect wave, but it's a, we've had rises and falls in our, in our, in our data. And I believe that with the advent of vaccines, and with additional knowledge of how this virus works and how it spreads, coupled with increased awareness of the seriousness of it, that we will again see, begin to see another fall in our transmission in our community. I also believe that this motion makes sense because it does continue to provide Dr. Walt's flexibility that he needs to adapt to rapidly changing conditions of the virus, which we have seen is the case. This motion, or this proposal, I think, best balances the safety and health concerns that we heard so poignantly tonight and at our last meetings, in fact, our meetings that we've held since the summer, and also the needs that we've heard from our students and our parents for their, the need for more in-person learning, because as we know, in-person learning is more than just learning the material. It's the connections that you make with others, your peers, and your teachers. There's so much more that goes on in the classroom besides just learning the facts and the figures. There's that social-emotional piece that's very difficult. It's, it's happening over virtual, but it's very, it's very difficult for some of our students, and we've heard testimony to that. We have data to support that. And the other option we could do is to reject this Dr. Walt's plan altogether and stick with our February 2 rollout, which, for various reasons, I would also support. But this, however, is not as responsive to the needs of our teachers and staff, as we have very clearly heard throughout the last several meetings that we've had, especially given the rising numbers. Now, another option that we could do is we could accept Dr. Walt's plan. This motion could fail. We could just keep the plan for bringing our high school students back the end of April. However, my colleague, Mr. Wilk, has very clearly identified some of the problems with that, and I concur with the problems that he has identified. From the secondary student perspective, there isn't any really, there isn't any good hope along with that plan. And I think hope at this point is extremely important. We're almost a year into this pandemic. We are into, a year into it. We're almost a year into the effect on students' lives, and at this point, hope is, hope is a commodity. Hope is valuable. And I think a plan like this, where we say, look, we'll push it back a month, that, that puts a value on hope. It says, we, it gives motivation for our health department and others to partner with us and get the job done in an expedited manner, because March 1st is coming up in a month, right? A month, well, a month from February 1st. And so I think those are good reasons. That gives motivation. When you have a deadline, you work hard. When the deadline's achievable, you work even harder. You don't give up. And so I think for those reasons, this is the best balance for safety and health. We, we do want to prioritize that. We need to. COVID's tricky. It's going to be with us for a long time. In fact, I believe, my personal belief is that we'll have COVID here for, forever. And, but it also prioritizes the needs of our students. And ultimately, as a board member, as a representative on this board, I represent the students and the families. They are the product, they are the beneficiaries of this world-class education that we provide, and we do need to listen to what they are saying and find ways to meet their needs. I know the governor is behind this. Our president-elect is behind the effort to, when I say this, I mean, you know, working to get in-person learn, learning back on track. I believe we in Prince William County are behind this. I think everybody is behind this. I think this is the goal that everybody has and everybody wants. I think this option gives us enough flexibility to adapt, but it also applies some pressure, and it's achievable, and it doesn't prolong the pain and suffering that is happening for those who want the choice to return. And for those reasons, I am in favor of it.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. I'll go to Ms. Jackson.
First, just wanted to take a moment and thank everybody for continuing this discussion tonight. I know that we were, got late in the evening, so I'm really appreciative of the superintendent's staff for, you know, continuing to answer our questions and for everybody to continue the discussion tonight. This is not easy on all of us. We are all in this pandemic together. We may be experiencing it differently, but we're experiencing it together. Members of the board may see things differently, but I am thankful for the discussions and collaboration, because I represent a spectrum of different views. I know, no matter what we do, there will be some people that feel unheard if we do not take the course that they want us to. So I continue to ground my stance in following the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health guidelines, and I also continue to defer to the education professional, Dr. Waltz. However, like Dr. Waltz and other teachers, I base my decision based on the best data possible. And at this time, it is difficult to make a decision to defer all the way into April. I look forward to continuing this discussion in February, and from there, making a database decision as to when, if the deferred month is possible. So I believe that this offers a good compromise, and continues the discussion, and, and to determine whether or not we're successful with the rollout, and how many teachers get vaccinated by February, what happens with the metrics. And I also want to ask the community to continue to follow CDC guidelines, because this is direct result, the metrics are a direct result of our, our decisions, and our kids are watching. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo what Ms. Jackson said to a certain extent. I do appreciate the board and our ongoing willingness to continue to discuss these things, because that is definitely our job. As far as this motion is concerned, I, I have consistently said that in my house, I am keeping my child virtual, and I stand behind that. And I agree with bringing in students who absolutely necessary for them to learn in person, because there is no other way for them to learn. It has been said often, and not often enough, that we have students who do not, who did not learn pre-pandemic in a building, just as much as we have students who are not learning at home now, while we're in the middle of a pandemic. And I respect that. One size of educational model does not work for everyone, and it's never going to work for everyone. However, I think it is misguided of this board to base our decision to return students into a building based upon hope. And that is what we're saying with this motion, or at least that is what I've heard my, some of my board members say right now. I hope for a better America. I'm a minority. I hope for that all the time. It is not changing any laws. It's not changing the way I'm getting treated, not changing anything. I think it is very misleading to run a division on hope. When we're asking, and we've been consistently asked by our constituent base, by everybody, to run it on data. We just heard the superintendent tonight say, under his, to the best of his knowledge, in meeting with the pandemic team and everyone else, he does not believe that our school division staff will be vaccinated till mid-March. But what we're asking is to put a pause with the hope that we can return students, 4th and 5th grade and beyond, in March. That's, that is what this motion means. That's what we're asking him to do. And I know from listening to the Board of County Supervisors meeting tonight, we as a Prince William County started our vaccination plan late. We didn't start at the same time Fairfax, which is, which is why we're behind the eight ball. We also heard tonight that the school division has no authority in expediting the vaccine. I, I'm hopeful that it happens, too. But where we stand right now doesn't look like that is to be the case. Do I think April is late for our children to come back, who opt to come back into the building? Absolutely. April is very close to the end of the school year. But April does provide time for all of our staff to be vaccinated. Even if they get vaccinated, according to what we think the timeline will be now, is beginning January 28th, that puts them at the earliest, one month from the first person or the first group of people getting vaccinated, let's just say they did it on the 28th. That means February 28th, they would be getting their second dose. And March 1 is when you're asking them to put a pause to, to have students come back in, who are eligible, you know, according to this motion this evening. That is my biggest problem with this. I don't know how to get over that. I don't want to be like Fairfax or the other counties and say, well, this is what we're going to do tonight, and then a month from now, we're going to reverse course. We have not done that yet. I, I take an extreme amount of pride in the fact that we have not gone back and forth like our surrounding counties. And I'm almost certain, in a month, they're going to do the same thing they've been consistently doing, which is changing the timeline. Now, a good compromise to me would say, why don't we just ask for an update and review this in February, when we do have more knowledge and we are further down the road? I mean, just simple, we know, just from the last meeting to tonight, how quickly things can change. Now, whether they change for the positive or the negative, we don't know that. But to, to make an alteration to what has been presented on us, on the hope that it works out, I think is a lot for a school division this large, and the amount of coordination it takes to get all of the scheduling and everything done. People come, say, oh, well, you know, bus schedules, and we, we've had 10 months. And we haven't had 10 months. This pandemic has been raging for 10 months. We didn't have a vaccine 10 months ago. We didn't have a vaccine six months ago. So I, I think that there's, I think that this is a big ask. I hear the argument about, don't take our choice away. Nobody's taking your choice away. The choice is delayed, but the choice is not gone. Whether you have an option to go in with six weeks, eight weeks, four weeks, that choice is still very valid. It's still very real, and it's still there. Your right has not been taken away. The timeline to which you can go back into a building safely keeps moving. But your choice has not been taken away. That has never been on the table. And I don't think anybody on this board would ever support removing that choice or that option, provided we can do it in a mitigated and safe manner. I don't think anybody on this board would support taking that choice away. When it comes to the hybrid learning and whether our teachers are doing a good job, I don't even think this is part of the debate either. We know our teachers are doing a fantastic job. They have bent over backwards and provided office hours and met outside of regular contract hours, and, and had to learn a new way of teaching three times in less than six, seven months? It's not about whether our teachers can teach. This is about what we said we would do, which was to be as safe as possible. And we've been leading the way in that. And we've been doing a fantastic job. And I think what this motion does, or what it speaks to me, is it, it pushes it. It pushes our staff to be more anxious and thinking, now they're, they're going to have to go back to preparing, not February, but now March. So it buys them a one month, but it doesn't change our vaccine timeline, which is what they're most worried about, what we're hearing consistently. And again, I can't emphasize enough, it's not under Dr. Walt's auspices. As a board, we can push to say, we're going to put people in March 1, and that puts pressure on the BOCS, and it, and then in turn, they'll put pressure. But they're doing that right now anyway, whether we make this decision or not. I would ask the board to really reconsider and make the priority meeting for an update in February, making a, a determination at that point in time, instead of changing a plan, or saying we're going to change a plan, but at the same time, saying we're still giving Dr. Waltz the authority. You can't have it both ways. And that's exactly what this motion is saying, too. It's saying, well, we're going to let Dr. Waltz have the authority to make any changes as he considers necessary, but we're going to move it to March. But we're still going to give him the authority. That's having your cake and eat it, too, and it's very misleading, and I don't agree with it. If we're going to do something, let's do it. Sorry, the only old-fashioned saying that came to mind is like, I can't, can't think of a politically non-offensive way, but it has to do with being on a pot or not. So this motion is very conflicting. And when I first read it, I asked for it to be revised so that it was more clear. But I don't agree with this. I can't agree with this, and I will, and even if I'm in the minority, I'm going to stand firm in my position. You got to pick one way or the other. You can't say move it to March, but give Dr. Waltz the authority, because that means we can make this motion. Tomorrow, he can get up and be like, that's fine, you guys want March 1? I'm still going to do April, because we're letting him do that in this motion. Justin, you're looking at me like you're confused. The last line of this motion reads, "The superintendent shall retain authority to take such measures as he considers necessary to protect the health and, of students and staff, including measures needed to respond to the impact of the pandemic on individual schools." So we got to make up our mind as a board. We're going to give him that authority and let him do what he presented and says he's going to do, or we're going to change it. You can't do both ways in the same sentence. It's talking out both sides of your mouth. So I'm not going to support this motion. I'm going to support what Dr. Waltz said, because that's what we agreed to do. If, if, I'm hopeful, too, and by, by the grace of God and every other entity out there, we're able to vaccinate our staff earlier, and we can provide a more safe and healthy environment, then that's great. But I would also ask the board to reconsider how much time it takes to make all of those changes necessary in order to reenact another plan. So if we're going to be making changes, let's be real clear. We're going to be the changing authority, or we're going to give it to Dr. Waltz. We're going to be the changing authority or we're going to give it to Dr. Waltz. And let's see what else. There's no other options on the table. So I can't support this. I'm not talking out of both sides of my mouth. I'm going to stand firm in my position. If we gave the authority to Dr. Waltz, let's give him the authority. If we want to review in February and have him adjust his plan in February, or ask him for a new plan in February based on where we are, I don't have any disagreement with that. But I, I don't know how we can talk out both sides of our mouth.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Waltz.
Yeah, a couple of things, Ms. Williams. Thank you for that. I do agree that is, in a sense at the end, it is pretty vague. I, I now have to reevaluate that. I didn't write the motion. But I also want to be clear, like, my position has never been wait for the vaccine. I've always said, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of in-person learning and phasing in hybrid. My latest thing was a course phasing protecting and providing a virtual option for tier, increased at-risk tier-one employees. So I just want to clarify, I know we've mentioned names, and I appreciate that. But I, I do agree. But the one thing I want to point out is if, if we say we're going to check in with him, I believe from my Q and A from last week with Dr. Waltz, or a couple of different Q and As, and Mr. Dr. Waltz, you can say something here is, I thought if we were moving forward, there was no discussion about possibly bringing secondary kids in sooner. Fourth and fifth grade, that was on the table potentially. But moving forward, if we vote on this plan, we're moving forward full steam ahead of making sure the high school kid, putting the high school kids at the end of April, secondary at the end of April. Dr. Waltz, am I incorrect? I, I just, I feel like that's what I thought I heard from last week's 3:00 AM meeting.
I presented the plan and then there were two things that I mentioned after many, much discussion. One was I would be willing to come back after, you know, another board meeting or so and see how we were with the fourth and fifth grades in terms of the numbers and the CDC recommendations. And the other was if you didn't want to leave the two weeks after spring break, you'll, you'll go through, you're more than likely to go through the same thing that you've been going through now, which is all these school systems around us closed due to safety and everybody, you know, so many people being panicked about it. So again, that's why, that's why that was built in.
Okay. So thank you, Dr. Waltz. I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but just a point of clarity. If, if we came back and we had a meeting, you know, in the, whatever the next meeting, and we found that we're moving closer and we're doing, things are, and I hope, as some have said, that vaccination process is moving more swiftly, at that point, is there any discussion of revising of when you would bring in the secondary students? Or is it still the timeline that you have laid out in your plan moving forward?
Well, what I said was depending upon the vaccinations, if by miracle, let, let's not forget, folks, 20 million people were going to be vaccinated by the end of December. I think maybe we're at six now. Okay, they've started giving some vaccinations. I personally went into my, the pharmacist at the Safeway I shop, he said they don't have a single dose and they're a major distributor of the vaccination. So at any rate, I, I think, you know, I'm all for hope, but giving people false hope and constantly having everybody upset in anticipation. I had someone who wrote me and reminded me of a phrase that I, I haven't heard for years, but I, I grew up with it. And this person said, this is my two cents worth. You're better to have a more conservative plan and come back to the school board and say, look, we can bring in the fourth and fifth graders four weeks earlier. Or we don't need to have the two weeks after spring break and because the vaccination is going so well, we can move that up. What I think this does is just continue the anxiety level off, off the roof. And I don't think it's realistic at all when we haven't vaccinated a single teacher and we know we need 28 days before they even get the second vaccination. The, the whole thing about the, the way the virus is mutating, the airborne particles concern, I mean, and I never even saw this plan. I mean, if, if I would have brought a plan to the board in the middle of a school board meeting, you'd be scheduling a personnel conference in closed session. So I, I just want you to know, I'm not supportive of the plan. I will certainly come back. I am certainly willing to come back when we see how these numbers are. But this plan, no. We will not have people vaccinated and I'm not willing to have hundreds and hundreds of kids in middle and high schools pouring in with what we know about the airborne issues.
Dr. Waltz, this, this plan I ran by you when we had our conference that I asked you that I would, I would be willing, I'd be bringing to the board last Tuesday just to delay a month with the idea that we don't need to push off till April. This was discussed also late in the morning at the last meeting, that the idea was to rather than pushing off to April, delay a month, come back in February and look at it and see where we are. Now, I, I recognize your arguments that, you know, people don't like to be told and be like strung along, totally understand that. We haven't done that relative to our regional partners or our, our neighbors. They have done all sorts of things where they brought people in, shut them down, said they're coming back in February to even talk about it. We've pretty much stuck to a set of dates and, you know, done as best as we can relative to the regional neighbors. So this is not anything that is new to you. I discussed this with you the day before and I asked that, and I told you all that this is, I would be bringing a motion like this to the board to consider, rather than pushing off to April, where I felt like that would just really, you know, not leave us much time for in-person, that we don't have to make that decision now. So what I'm asking in this resolution is that we're going to push back for a month. And I understand, I recognize the criticism that this may string folks along, totally understand. But I also recognize that we are in the last semester and this is the last chance for kids to have an opportunity. And if the vaccine, which changes everything, if we get it into people, I recognize your concern about it not working and we're not getting it. And if in February you say, you know, we just don't have it in there, we're still surging, things are different, then I don't think this board will oppose going in in April. But this is what we're asking. This, your school division was ready to go in, in February. They had planned to go in in February, correct? Based on the current plan.
I don't have it in front of me, but yes, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the February dates were when we were starting. The first day of third quarter was when we were going to start to bring in secondary and, and some of our high school the week after that. So we were, your, your folks were planning to do that anyway. So what I'm asking you to consider with this motion is that those folks just consider pushing back a month. And yes, I, I recognize that this will be concerning to students and family, but those, those points you made are, are correct. But this is not something that I cooked up in the middle of this meeting. This is something that I brought forward last, we discussed this at the last meeting as well, to just delay.
I'd like to respond to that because I, I had a conversation with you, with Keith Emon, that lasted for 57 minutes, and I took notes on that conversation. And you mentioned all kinds of ideas, but you never said to me, I am bringing back a motion to delay those dates for one month. And I just want to make sure I understand this. You're saying that every date on the plan that I presented to you, you're just moving every one of those dates by one month. Is that what you're suggesting?
The October plan. So if you look at the October plan for what the dates were for students to return in February, so fourth grade, fifth grade, or the, or really even the end of January, the fourth, fifth grade, all of those dates for fourth grade onward should be shifted one month. That's what this plan is asking for.
Well, again.
And that's what I asked you a number of times.
In the middle of a meeting. I mean, the board would never tolerate that for me. You've chastised me over and over publicly because you only had the information an hour or two before the meeting. When I present a plan, this last plan, I called every board member. I gave them the plan in writing the day before. You can't even do an appropriate vetting of, of whether or not, you know, it, it's workable to do that. And you need 30 days to do scheduling. And when, and when people say, well, you've had, you've had since October to do scheduling, bus schedules, the people in, the changes in parent view change constantly. You have to have a hard stop date.
Dr. Waltz, in the meeting the other night, we had considerable discussion on starting in the middle of third quarter, which would have been March versus the middle of fourth quarter. This is not a mystery. This is not new. We had a discussion that said the concerns about switching in the middle of a quarter were challenging, but then we compared that to your recommendation of going in two weeks into the fourth quarter and found that those same challenges were going to be avail, there outside of the health metrics. Those same concerns and challenges were going to be there.
Well, I just don't understand if this thing is, is about getting people vaccinated. According to the information I've read, you have to have 28 days from the first vaccination to get the second one, and that the vaccination is then effective 10 to 14 days after the second vaccination to be fully affected. That's what I've been told. So if you look at that timeline, that does not, that does not add up.
So Dr. Waltz, I'm not making this recommendation only on the vaccine. I, I pointed out in my recommendation that we, we could have gone in prior to the vaccine being available. That was this plan. Our current plan that would have put students in, in February, was not based on a vaccine. Was never based on a vaccine. The plan to go in in February, third quarter, was never based on a vaccine. It was with the hopes that the health metrics were in a position where we could probably go in. So.
I, I agree with you on that, but these things evolve constantly.
They, they do. And, and one thing that the science has shown us is that schools have not been a source of spread. We've been able to go in. Our own success in getting students in has been well documented. And I continue to have confidence in you all to get this done, and, and I think we can do it. Now, we're not mandating anything other than coming back in February and revisiting where we are for the potential to go in earlier. You may say to us, look, at this point, four and five can come in. I don't think I can do the rest. And maybe we can do them all on the first day of spring break afterwards, or maybe we can, we vaccinated all our fourth and fifth grade folks, we vaccinated some of our middle school, maybe they can come in in March. But I don't believe in giving up on March.
So let me, let me just be clear because again, I have not seen this until it appeared on the screen and I'm confused by it. So I'm asking for clarification.
Right.
On February 17th, are you saying that you want to revisit all the dates on the 17th?
We would come back and look at the feasibility of going in in March.
Chairman Latif, that's, this is my issue with the way the, the motion is worded. It, it's not, it's asking for an additional delay for a month and for an update on February 17th and giving, maintaining, having the superintendent maintain his authority. So it's not, that was my, that's my problem with this motion.
So on the, on the motion, so, understood. The motion regarding the authority is that he always has had the authority on the current schedule to shut down today if he wanted. If he felt that the metrics were bad, he could shut down today, everything in resort to virtual if he chose. That has always been there and the spirit of the last sentence was to say, look, if we need to make, you know, second and third grade can't go in next week or something's happening, this continues to give him that. That's the spirit of the, the last two sentences. They may look a little clunky, understood, but that's what the spirit is now.
But the problem is with a motion, it can't be in the spirit. It has to be worded properly because what we wrote on is essentially what it is. So we don't have room to interpret the spirit. It has to be what it is. This is my issue with motions. And I know I'm taking a hard line on it and I always do because motions are our laws. So we can't do it in the spirit of or what we hope for. It has to be what it says it is.
Right. So in our last motion, the October motion also had the same type of language that allowed him to make changes.
No, I, I understand that.
You understand, so.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is it's asking for three different things. The first thing is that we pause for a month, which puts us the pause from February to March based upon the current plan that we have, not what we presented the last meeting. The second part of it says that on February 17th, we come back and we, we reevaluate. And the third part says that the superintendent retains its authority. What I am saying to you is that is what the motion says. We don't get the, we don't get the option to work in the spirit of or the hope of, we follow what, he has to follow what we say. And that is why you have motions. And that is why we spend a lot of time wordsmithing and crafting them so that they are correct, so the direction is clear, so that there is, there is a, a single path to follow. And this motion does not in the, we can't say in the spirit of. That's why we have lawyers and Roberts Rules of Order.
Hello?
Ms. Jesse.
Hi. Thank you. First of all, let me say this. Dr. Latif, I, I have never seen this motion. I was not involved in the development of the motion and this is a corporate board. And I'm very disappointed that this motion was written and that I was not involved. I had to read it, find it tonight because I do represent teachers and I represent a constituency. But I would like to have my input into what I was going to say before you wrote this motion that I've never seen. So I would like for you to pull up the slide that has the surveillance form. I would like it, that this slide is, looks upside down here on the screen. I'm not sure if it's right side up. Could you pull that up, Mrs. Heidner? Because I would like to start my discussion with using that slide.
Jason, are you able to pull up slide number?
I am working on it. What's, what number is that?
That's, this is good. Okay. At the end of the, in the middle of the meeting last week, I asked for if the surge was showing up at our schools. And I was told, yes, it is. And I didn't realize that there was surge data to provide that. Mrs. Heidner sent to me on Friday afternoon at 4:15, this, my slide does not have the latest data, but in my slide, this is my concern. This slide shows us that, according to my slide, that based, based on my data, that there were 414 staff submission. Right after we came back to school, we had, within three days between the third, the fourth and the fifth, or the, the fourth, the fifth and the sixth, we had 414 surveillance forms. And then with students, we had 366. So what it tells me is that we have a surge outside and we have a surge in the school. And yet we brought back second graders and third graders. And this is not in relationship to the motion, is, is in relationship with what I want to talk about tonight because I've never seen the motion before. My concern is this, and Mrs. Heidner, I understand that this submission form indicate, they had three elements. One, the person was either, thought they were exposed, they were exposed to COVID, they were ill and possibly could have COVID, or third, they had COVID. Am I correct?
Yes, or a positive test result.
So I, when I, Dr. Waltz, by the way, Dr. Waltz, my daughter thought I was too mean to you, so I had to apologize. But it's just so emotional for me. I, I have, and today when I heard about the custodian, I lost it because I do not think that any of our kids should be in school. However, I do not think that we should be bringing in second and third graders at this time. So I asked Dr. Latif and I asked you last week, you can take the slide down now. Thank you. Dr. Waltz, if you recall, when we had our conversation, which was a good conversation, I really, I really, because I was able to just talk to you. And I, I said to you at that time. And I said to you at that time, here's the problem that I have. We have second and third graders that we're bringing in. And then when I saw this full surveillance form, I realized we've got, the surge is in our schools. And yet we're bringing in more kids. So one, I don't think we should bring in the second and third graders. That's number one. Two, I said to you, it's going to be a problem with this fourth quarter. I had some problem with that. It seems so late, the last month of school. I know what the last month of school looks like. And people are doing a lot of things, but we're going to be preparing for graduation. And the third thing, which came to mind when I talked to the Secretary of State, was this getting the vaccine. So from what I'm hearing tonight, and when you said we can't control the vaccine and when all this, you can't, we haven't given one shot to any teacher from what I understand. And there's 28, I don't see how we can safely bring teachers back in in March. I just don't see that. And I agree with you. But I don't, if we can avoid keeping kids out of school until the last quarter. So I'm not making a motion. I'm just saying that I think that when we return, it should be based on two items. Vaccination and declining metrics. Vaccination and declining metrics. We do not have the staff to bring kids back, even presently. Because what we're doing, we're asking people who have tier one status to relook at their tier one status and maybe where more PPE, we're going to give you more PPE. Fogier County said, we don't have the staff. We don't have the staff to do what we're doing presently. And so I'm asking if you could, because I asked you this last week and you gave me that smile, which meant I'm not going to commit. But I want to be fair to you. I would like for you to consider the second and third graders that are in school now, that we, I don't know the proper term, and I'm not saying this in a professional way. I don't think they should be there. Because when I look at this submission form, there's COVID everywhere. We got the surge from Christmas. Now we're going to have a surge in January. So why would we put people in possible harms way for that period of time? Whether they come back at the end of the year. I just don't think I can commit to this motion. Because the motion does not, you know, I said last week, there's an expression that you wait until the dust settles. And I know it's kind of like, what does that mean? You wait until you get the data. You wait until you know you want teachers back to have the vaccine. Why can't we wait until we know everybody's gotten the vaccine to make a decision? Why can't we wait until we see the metrics to make a decision? Why do we have kids in school right now when we've got this thing showing us that we went, we picked up 400 possibilities in three days? So I guess my, I'm expressing my concerns. And to Dr. Latif, this motion, you say, it's not you, you, it's the board. And I am offended that I did not have a chance to have input into this and that this is the way this nice meeting was going to go. But I would like for second and third graders not to be in school with these high metrics that we have and with the surveillance. I would like fourth, fifth, and the other students to be delayed. I do not think that they should be delayed until, what is it, April, unless you absolutely have to. And my, I would like those things considered. And I think that if you can do that, I am pleased. I can't vote for this motion because this motion does not include the second and third graders. And you don't have enough time for people to get vaccines. Right now, we don't have a plan. Because we're saying other people are planning for us, but we're coming up with dates. I agree with Lori Williams. We're coming up with dates and times when we have not given one shot to any teacher. We have to keep our teachers safe. I know I'm rattling on, but that's where I am. I think those second and third graders should be in our homes and be safe. We've lost a staff member. I know everybody said it wasn't because she was in our school, but she was in our schools at some point in time. Thank you. So, Dr. Walts, could you please respond to whether or not we could possibly look at those second and third graders and possibly wait until the dust settles off and arrest? I know it's not a motion. It's not clean. You're not, you're on the mute button. Mute button.
I'm sorry. So I did what you asked when we had our telephone conversation, Mrs. Jesse. You asked me if any remaining conversations were yet to take place with board members for me to ask if any of them would support that. I think I had three left after I talked with you. And there were none that were interested in reversing course on that. I mentioned to you that I went to a school today to check on how things went. Certainly, you know, there's a lot of confusion about who's really running things. Is it me or is it the school board on these plans? But certainly if the board took a vote to not have the second and third graders in, you know, that's where we would be. But what I do have is I asked Mr. Iman to talk to the elementary level associates and get their feedback about the fourth and fifth grade and the plan that I put in front of you last week. Mr. Iman, could you please give that input that you received today? And while he's getting back on there, I also just want to remind you that we sent out to every board member today, something that we just received today from the Prince William Health District. And item on the metrics, item number two says, the Prince William Health District shared that it is highly likely that there will be a quote, "a surge on top of the current surge," end quote, "in the next few weeks due to the impact on the holiday activities and travel." So that's today.
Let's kind of ask you something then, since it's up to you. If there's another surge on the surge, and by the way, when you and I had this conversation, we didn't have this. We didn't have this data. Would you, like on a moment's notice, once you realize that the surge is, that not remove kids from these classrooms?
It is possible that I could call a strong stop if the data was that dramatic. We have been able to do well with these small numbers of kids in. And so that's, and then the CDC saying to try to get the pre-K, the third grade in. So again, that's what I'm basing the current thinking on.
Well, I'm basing it on the surge and what possibly is going to happen. Because after a period of time, I think we're going to see more. And I just don't think that we put second and third graders in and we put teachers in classrooms without the vaccine. I think we need to get these people vaccine, get the vaccine to these people and protect them. Because I don't want anything to happen to people. I don't, this case, this death, we said, well, it didn't happen. I don't know how it happened, but it did happen and she did work in a school system. So I would like for them, and I asked Dr. Latif last week during this marathon to consider second and third. And he didn't get back to me to say, well, we're not going to consider it at all. So I was left to this motion that came in tonight. So I'm just, I guess I'm frustrated. I'm sure the public has said, what is with her? I'm just frustrated because we're all over the map. We're going to give you the authority to look at the metrics and make a decision? Again, I say, I want vaccination and declining metrics. And I can't vote for this motion because we have, there's no way in my mind when we've not given one vaccination to one teacher that we're going to get two in.
Let me take a moment to sort of respond here and remind everybody that this board hasn't had five votes to really move anything in any one direction since the summer. This board has struggled to come to an agreement on a course of action that we could all find unanimity on, other than originally supporting the idea of a hybrid model. And the dates have always been in dispute and the desires of different board members have always been in dispute. We have not had five votes to do any one thing. And so what we worked with, with Dr. Walts throughout the fall was, you know, to recommend that he come up with a plan. And the board found it acceptable at the time and they chose to support the plan. There was five votes to support the plan at that point in November or October, whenever we did that, October 20th, I guess. So the plan was, and it always has been, if you look at the motion, that Dr. Walts retains authority to do what he needs to do. He's always had the flexibility to shut down, strong stops, pause, halt, as he wishes based on the metrics his pandemic team has offered him. That has always been there. We put a schedule together. Now, Dr. Walts came back to this board last week. He had a number of conversations the day before. I made my concerns clear in the marathon meeting. It was clear, Ms. Jesse and to everyone, that the board wasn't in favor of doing anything differently with the pre-K through three. Most of the board agreed with what Dr. Walts was doing with pre-K through three and bringing in second and third. And so that was all discussed in open and in full transparency of the public for 10 hours. What was also discussed was my concern that I would like to offer a motion that was different than Dr. Walts' in the sense that I didn't want to give up on possibly bringing students in earlier. And I had asked that night, asked the day before, did he consider an option where we push back just a month to March to bring everyone in 30 days after we thought we would? I believe the vaccine changes those things. So again, I'm not doing anything in secret or behind the scenes. Even up until this moment, when we had written the motion, I don't have five votes for anything. There is no conspiracy or conspiring. I know where each person stands. Everyone recognizes this. There are significant concerns from this board in the last 10-hour meeting that a number of board members made it clear, including Ms. Jesse, that April 28th seemed late to bring in our high school students. And so that was the spirit of the discussion of that evening. Nobody wanted to vote that evening to consider a motion. And so we brought us to today. Dr. Walts, at the beginning of the meeting, did say, Dr. Walts, with all due respect, you've always said, well, if this board chooses to move in another direction, then, and you have five votes, then that's what we'll do. And so, you know, nothing here was done in secret or conspiring. This was all done in full transparency of the public. I have not kept it a secret that my interest was to even go in in February, but I recognize that that's a challenge. And so that's why I prefaced my remarks on this motion earlier. And that is why this motion wasn't seen by sort of, say, everybody, because I'm not sure I have five votes for this. Now, what I'm asking is not radically different than what Dr. Walts has offered. Dr. Walts has offered something more hard and concrete in the sense that he's giving you a solid April date. It's a conservative approach, as he pointed out, that he believes he can keep to. Now, he also gave us the February dates because he believed he could keep to those. And things changed and the surge is happening. Everything is accurate in what Dr. Walts has said. What I believe is the great question of the day for all of us is how the vaccine changes this. I believe that, you know, the metrics may improve to a point where maybe when we come back on February 17th, we could say, look, we, you know, maybe we can start to go in in March. But maybe in February 17th, the pandemic team is reporting, you know, worse metrics. The surge is not peaking. It's continuing. Vaccine delivery hasn't been what it was promised. And then at that point, we, you know, cut the cord and say, that's it. Now, I recognize the public may not like this. I mean, I haven't been popular on either side with any of this throughout the entire pandemic. This is not for popularity or for politics. This is more for the sense that I truly do believe we can get folks in a little bit sooner than April 27th, 28th. And so those are why I brought this up. There's no mystery here. I said this, all the same things last Wednesday going into Thursday morning. There's nothing here that's different. On the second and third grade issues, Ms. Jesse, the entire board has been pretty consistent that they support Dr. Walts very strongly on the idea that we need to get pre-K through three in. That has been the highest priority of this division. And frankly, remarkably managed and done well compared to our neighbors who haven't done really any of it. I think we've done a heroic effort and that's all credit to our teachers, 100% and to our great administration. And so those are the reasons I brought this up. There's no hiding here, Ms. Jesse. There's no compromise that was worked on until, you know, I thought we had a few votes. And that's why I'm offering this motion. If the board chooses not to, hold on. If the board chooses not to support this motion, then Dr. Walts' plan will probably stand because we don't have anything else we can come to an agreement on. I'll go to Ms. Jesse first and then Dr. Walts.
Second and third grade not being in school.
Ms. Jesse, go ahead.
I want to know if any members of this board think that second and third graders should be in school considering the surge.
I think Ms. Williams has made it crystal clear all along. She believes everyone should be virtual. I don't want to talk for her, but is that right, Ms. Williams?
I do not believe in reversing course. We already have second and third graders in the building now. I think it is more traumatic to go back and interrupt their learning while they're already in the process of doing that. Personally, I believe everyone should be virtual, but it is my responsibility as a board member to think above and beyond my own personal feelings. So I think that would be the best way to frame it. I also want to note that, I think maybe you're aware, Chairman Latif, our vice chair, and I believe Ms. Ralston have not yet spoken at all.
Yes, correct. No, I understand. And we're going to get to them. Dr. Walts had his hand up. We'll go to Dr. Walts.
Yes, thank you. So again, as these things have changed, this issue, especially regarding the middle school and the high school, where you've got large numbers of kids in spaces. So for example, when I was at Signal Hill today, schools are doing it differently in terms of how they do it, but they still have the distance. So you go into their big cafeteria and in that particular school, you see individual desks where the kids sit six feet apart and have their lunch. What I'm concerned about with middle and high school, with the hundreds and hundreds of kids, that we did not know when I presented my last plan, if you could roll this video, this had a big influence on me. And there's a lot of information about it and it's on the CDC. Could you roll the video, please?
And now to the latest on the pandemic today. After revising its guidelines three times, the CDC is now warning that COVID can spread in small droplets that can linger in the air for minutes to hours. The agency also says those droplets can infect people who are further than six feet away from the person who is infected or even after that person has left the space.
So there's that piece, plus the surge, plus the mutation of the virus that's on the horizon. And knowing that we need in order, according to what the CDC is telling us, 42 days for the vaccination to be in place and we haven't vaccinated anyone yet. So it's for those reasons that that changed, several of those things changed. And that's why I have a serious concern. And my plan is based on the health and safety and lives of the children and the staff. And that's where I'm coming from. You're absolutely right, Dr. Latif. I didn't talk about vaccinations before, but I also didn't know about the airborne to that extent.
Understood. I mean, we can sit here and argue about the science on that, but we've been very successful with our younger grades. School divisions around the nation and around the world have successfully School divisions around the nation and around the world have successfully gone in hybrid around the country in the context of everything you have just said. And many have gone in with worse health metrics than we have earlier in September 8th. The entire Catholic diocese has been in, and I recognize they're smaller buildings and smaller systems. And that's, that's certainly a point. But will not, I, I don't want to take time away from the fact that we'll listen to, Ms. Ralston is next, and then we'll go to Ms. Zargarpur.
I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. You know, one group of people we, we haven't been talking about at all are the people who've been doing this job since September. We've had special ed in the entire time. We added our pre-K, we added kindergarten, first grade, and this week, second and third. And as somebody who also does this kind of job, I know that it may not be evident from here, but behind the scenes, there's been a lot of advocacy on my behalf to make sure that our teachers are safe. So in regard to making sure you have PPE distancing between desks, I think there's several principals now who could attest to me going to them very worriedly and asking, "How do you feel?" Of the ones I've talked to, they have a lot of confidence in their plans. So this is where I get my confidence to say, "Okay, I think we're going to be okay." So I don't want to forget about the people who are already in with the vaccines. I want to make sure that they are getting these things right away, whenever we can deliver them. Initially, hearing Dr. Walz's plan, I feel like it's just a, a long time to wait to get middle and high school back in. Two weeks after spring break, I understand the, you know, making sure that people don't bring back more virus and, and all that from a break, to make sure that all settles down is important, but I'm, I'm very concerned that we're just left with seven weeks of school and it's still disruptive. I'm wondering if the compromise we could strike here is if this motion, because after Ms. Williams talked, I understand now how it does sort of have this multiple message thing going on. Could we, could we be looking at, we don't know when the, when the vaccines will start. So that's an important piece. At our next meeting, can we, can we have a report of, would it be potentially based on, based on vaccinations, based on metrics trending downward? Would it be still, would we still be able to receive a report on the 17th with an eye towards still getting kids in sooner than the first anticipated plan that, that Dr. Walz presented last week? I guess, Dr. Walz, you'd be in the best position to answer that.
Sure, Ms. Zargarpur. So as I, as I said, going on three o'clock in the morning last Wednesday, you know, I, and just for the people who have posted about my own daughter, just as an FYI, she has always wanted to go back. So we have never in parent view done anything but say that we want her to go back in. So I, I'd just like to put that out there. But as I stated in the wee hours of the morning, I am all for moving this up if we get people vaccinated. And again, I, I have a lot of confidence in what we have in place so far because it's very small numbers. And for the most part, we're able to cohort and I realize there are some exceptions. I had several, like occupational therapists email me and say, "No, they're, you know, I have to go into multiple classrooms." But what I'm talking about is the students. For the most part, by and large, the students are not mixing up. If there's 10 students in a class, they stay together the whole day. They're not, they don't mix up like our middle and high school students will do. But if, if some miracle happens with this vaccine, but again, if you go to the calendar and you count 42 days from this proposal that's in front of you now, well, it's unrealistic. But I am all for coming back if, if we get the vaccine in place. I never gave Keith Emon the opportunity to give his assessment and I would like to do that as, as well, Ms. Zargarpur, because it's all related. Mr. Emon?
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Again, good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the board. Yes, I had a conversation with our elementary associates today, asking them for their thinking and that of their principles that they have been in communication with as to how things have progressed, particularly with the students we brought back and now adding the second and third grade. And while all the elementary associates were confident in the effectiveness of what we are doing, they also expressed to me that the majority of their principals feel good about what we're doing and confident about being able to deliver pre-K through grade three along with our most vulnerable students. They also expressed to me that the majority of their principals are in favor of Dr. Walz's plan to delay bringing back fourth and fifth grade. They need time to assess and where we are with the students that we've brought back now and for the other factors that Dr. Walz has already explained.
I do understand all of that. I'm just, I feel like I'm trying to, we, we hear from teachers and, and I'm very hopeful, I know we don't want to use the word hope all the time in some ways, but I'm very hopeful for this vaccine. I'm hopeful that we can get it out to our teachers sooner than later and, and that it will, you know, we, we can, we can move our in-person learning along. I, I'm just sort of, kind of in this stuck place because I do hear from students. I, I love hearing from our students and I do hear from so many who have expressed why they want to go back. And I have constituents who do. And so I'm sort of in this place where I'm, I'm a little torn with, I, I understand what you're saying, but I also want to know that if we possibly can get anything pushed up that, that we can, that we can address that. Because it's really important to, to those students who, who've been asking and for those parents who've been asking. And, and I, and you've, and I understand it's very hard to take an entire school division and go, "All right, in two weeks, we're doing this thing." And that's why I was thinking that if we planned as if we could enter in March or with this revised timeline, but we have to delay because the vaccines haven't finished or we have to delay just a little bit because of COVID numbers, is that a possibility still? It's sort of, it's sort of that, you know, the Boy Scout, being prepared, but having to adjust if we need to. Is that at all a possibility?
Yes, so let me give you a concrete example. So Mr. Emon, at my request, reached out to the associates. This was following my appearance at three different principals' meetings, the different levels, elementary, middle and high, and my appeal to, again, encourage them at the elementary, because every time we bring kids back and we bring additional staff back, there's very, very high anxiety in the buildings. And you can't argue with people's feelings. You can't necessarily mitigate fear. We can try to do everything we can to lower the anxiety level, but the fact remains, I'd like to see how this goes, as I've stated at every board meeting, every board meeting, I've been to one or two or three additional schools, myself personally, to talk and listen to people. If this thing goes smoothly and our numbers go down, then I would be absolutely willing to revisit. I will also say that, you know, when we do bring the, the fourth and fifth grade back, there, there is a feeling that the anxiety is so high every time a new group comes back. So, you know, again, I'm going to get more information to see how the next several days go, but I would probably stick with bringing the fourth and fifth graders back at the same time. But as I mentioned at the last meeting, granted, it was, you know, going on three o'clock in the morning, that certainly I would be willing to look at the new plans dates for those fourth and fifth graders regardless of where everything else is, but in also consideration of all those things, like for example, the numbers going down, to Ms. Jessie's point.
But to be clear, Dr. Walz, there's a little confusion here on the dice. The only thing you would reconsider in your plan, and you told each of us this the day before, and I think you reiterated it last time, and I don't think you're changing your mind, but the, if we stuck to your plan, the only thing you would reconsider was fourth and fifth sooner and starting people on the first day back from spring break. That's it. Not like bringing high school in in March, correct?
I would, I would have to go back, first of all, we'd have to monitor how things go. And then I need to go back to all the players to see exactly how the high school scheduling, the exact timeline, but I'm pretty sure it's three to four weeks. And then again, you have to see where we are with the mitigations. We do believe that we're going to be able to address some of the mitigations with the additional money that we receive. We think we're going to be able to solve some of those issues in the next few weeks. So there's some, some positive possibilities on that. Also with the transportation schedule, as I said, we are adding kids when they have their IEP meetings who come into school. And conversely, we've had parents who have decided, "Hey, things have improved or things are working well enough with the virtual. I'm taking them out of school and they're all virtual." We've had both of those things occur. And as I mentioned tonight, we're almost at 60% all virtual. So, you know, if by some miracle, we get those secondary people vaccinated and we can set the schedule in a different way, I'm not saying I would not do it. I was simply saying that if the vaccinations, mitigations, numbers go down, I could see that two weeks at spring break and also the fourth and fifth graders.
So, so right. So, so again, what you would consider altering in the schedule with the two weeks to bring in, everyone in sooner two weeks at the spring break start, right, right after spring break is over, and possibly fourth and fifth grade. But you wouldn't do anything different than that, even if there was everyone vaccinated by March 1, based on your plan, correct?
Well, not based on my plan, but again, if something were to change, I, I just would really need to talk to all the people involved with the scheduling, the IT people, the busing and everything else. I don't really see with 42 days that that's going to happen with middle and high.
Right. Okay. And so just a, one last point of clarification. On the video you showed us, the date on that video was October, I think, 7th. And it was something you felt that you didn't see, but that the CDC had mentioned something new about the particles. It's important to remember for everyone who just saw that video, and I think Ms. Hebner would probably agree with this, the CDC made no changes to their guidance based on that. That was a news report in a story, but the CDC didn't make any school return guidance changes off of that. Because had they done that, we would have made some changes. But the CDC made no changes at that point, nor did the VDH, based on what you saw in that TV report. That's why we didn't make any changes.
Well, I, I agree with you on that, but let's also remember the form we put up in front of you every two weeks that says, "Based on our metrics, we should be bringing in most vulnerable and pre-K to three." That's where I'm hanging my hat on this timeline.
Oh, of course. I mean, and everyone commends you for that. I mean, that, you know, and, and I think it's been well documented that, that I personally felt we could have done that sooner, but, but we, we did it and you have done a terrific job with that. And that's important for everyone to understand. And, and our teachers have done a terrific job and our principals have done a terrific job. Okay. Ms. Zargarpur was still on.
So is there any instance that you see that middle and high school could be brought in any sooner at all?
The two-week window after spring break.
May I speak?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Dr. Walz, did you say that you would, did you say you would have to talk to the principals? And I, I would like to see the students back a little bit earlier, but at the same time, I, I would, I would like to see, you know, the principals, the high school principals and the middle school principals came into a meeting one time, the middle school principals in particular. And they explained to us what it meant if the scheduling and all the things and why they made their decisions. Is there some way we could hear from those people? Because they're the people out in the field. So are you saying that your decision for April is based on what the high school and middle school principals have said to you?
Well, it's a combination of many, many factors, but certainly I'm on the line with them and get their feedback constantly.
Well, I, I continue to say vaccination and decline in metrics.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Wall?
I think that you, you still respond to what you see on the ground. If things change, I think we need to make those changes. Thank you. But I can't vote for this.
Ms. Wall?
I was just, I had a couple of points. One is that when I talk to schools, they are ready to, they, they say a different story about readiness. They say they're ready to implement whatever plan the board puts forward. So I, I don't know why we're still, you know, going down that road. And I know we've, we've talked about that in the past, but I had a couple of points. One is that I, I really do believe that vaccines will make a difference. And that's not hope, that's, that's data. If we talk about statistics, the COVID statistics that we all fear are driven by severe illness. And this vaccine has proven to be sufficient and effective against severe illness. So as vaccines get rolled out in our healthcare professional population and in our long-term, long-term care facility population, which are the bulk of our statistics, we should see a, a direct result of improving COVID statistics. And that will make a difference overall. I think we as a society are going to battle, battle COVID with the use of our mitigation strategies and our vaccines. As vaccines get, become more prevalent, it's going to make a difference. It will make a difference in our school division as well, as we vaccinate our teachers, especially those who are more likely to experience severe illness from COVID. And I want to make the point that we were ready to return students and teachers to classrooms even without the vaccine. And we certainly can return teachers and students to classrooms with many, if, if not all of our personnel vaccinated. And I, I do believe it's not hope, but it is, it is data that we are going to have very soon. So I, I do take issue with that. We're looking at the data. That's, that's going to drive this. March 1st is 48 days away. That is enough time. It's a little tight given the, the questions that we have about the plan of the Princeton Health Department. But I do also want to say, you know, with this plan, this, this motion is not a drastically different plan. What has been said to us many times is, "If the board wants something different, let me know. We can implement a different plan." If you hear, back in, back in October, when we were looking at that November 10th start date, that was the message. Look, you know, hey, we have the November 10th start date. If the board wants November 10th, we can do it. We're ready to do it, but you know, I think we should do February 2nd for high school, et cetera. That's always been the message with each plan modification. We have been told, of course, if the board wants something otherwise, we are prepared to act on what the board says. So tonight, this isn't a new motion. This is, I mean, it's a motion, but this isn't a new plan. This is saying, "Here's the plan, but we're telling you something different and can you please act on it?" That's the intent of the motion. I just wanted to make clear that it isn't something completely new. It is just a modification of dates of the essential plan. If numbers go down and things go well, for sure, we should revisit every aspect of this.
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I respectfully disagree with Ms. Wall because it is a new plan from what we were just presented last week. It's asking to.
It's, it's, no, what she's saying, it's different than, it's the same plan as October, just moving the dates. just moving the dates.
Right, so what I'm saying is, it is a new plan from what we were presented last week, because Dr. Wallace presented us a plan last week that changed the dates. So this would be today, a new plan, and I, I hear the, the constant topic of vaccines and providing space. 48 days is from today, but not from when the first set of teachers get vaccinated, which is the, the, that is what we keep saying is one of the key factors to providing a safe environment for our staff. So, look, you know, I think we have an option, we can just go ahead and, and vote on the motion as horribly written that it is, with three different asks in here, but I would like to amend the current motion on the floor, because I'm at this point over this, and you know, if, I'd like to amend the current motion to read that the Prince William County School Board modify the superintendent, that, excuse me, that the Prince William County School Board asked the superintendent to pause all plans and revisit this discussion after receiving an update on February 27th, 2021, period. Because if we're continuing to, at, well, first let me say, is there, I can't call for a second, but anyone?
I'm not, I'm not sure, are you, are you making a substitute motion?
I'm making a substitute motion.
And what is the substitute motion?
The substitute motion is that the Prince William County School Board pause all plans and revisit this discussion on February 17th, 2021.
Do I have a second for that?
A second.
So, okay, so this, this is what, what this new motion is, and we don't have it written here, but basically, do you want to pause to, okay, we got to do that.
So the Prince William County School Board paused.
So this is, this is a motion to substitute for our current motion, so we'll have to vote on that, we'll discuss and vote on that, and then we'll, then do the full motion.
Prince William County School Board.
Now, Ms. Williams, if you, if you, okay, fine.
The reason why I'm asking this.
We're going to take a 15-minute recess to write that motion up and put it up.
I don't need, I mean, do we need 15?
You need at least 10 minutes. We're all set, so I have a request from Ms. Williams to rescind her motion, then offer something different.
Yes, so I want to make sure that it's worded correctly. So I've asked Ms. Jackson to withdraw the second, and Ms. Jackson agreed, but I would like for her to say that, because that would be the proper way to.
Ms. Jackson, do you agree to withdraw your second?
I agree to withdraw my second.
Okay.
Thank you, so my.
So you withdraw your first?
Correct, and the correct substitute motion would be that I move that Prince William County Schools revisit the superintendent's phased-in return-to-learning plan on February 17th, 2021, after receiving an update on health metrics and progress of vaccine distributions.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, point of order, so this should be a motion to substitute this motion.
Is this a substitute? Okay, so let's, let's be clear on this for everyone.
Sorry, it's getting late, I apologize.
So as, as, so Ms. Jessie made a motion to substitute, or no, Ms. Jessie, Ms. Williams made a motion to substitute. She'll, somebody will second that motion to substitute. Then there'll be a discussion on the substitute, then we'll vote on the substitute. If the substitute passes, it kills my original motion and becomes the full motion, that's it. And if the substitute.
It doesn't, it doesn't kill your motion if, 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 if that motion passes, no, no, you're, you're correct, I apologize.
I'm correct, I'm correct, because we're substitute, because you're calling it a substitute, not an amendment, right?
Yes.
So if it was an amendment, that's different, but this is a substitute. So, so in essence, when you vote for Ms. Williams' motion, you're killing my motion, and so that's something to keep in mind, so it's, everyone's clear on what we're doing here. Ms. Williams will offer a motion, it will have a second, we will discuss Ms. Williams' motion for a few minutes, then we will take a vote on Ms. Williams' motion. Depending on how that falls out, if her motion passes, then that's it. If her motion dies, then we will vote on my motion, and we'll just do this, you know, do that quickly, there's no reason to have further discussion on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could interject, please?
Yeah.
So Ms. Williams is making a motion to substitute.
Right.
For your motion.
Right.
Her motion to revisit this on February 17th.
Right.
The board, with a second, the board then votes on whether to accept the substitute motion.
Right.
If that, if that passes, you must then vote on the substitute motion.
Correct, but if it passes to accept her substitute, that effectively kills mine. The first vote kills mine, not the second vote.
Correct.
Is that right, Mary?
Correct.
So it's really the first vote that we have to, you know, consider, so you're not, you're not entertaining, we're not, if, we're not even getting to the second vote. If we get to the second vote and that doesn't pass, then we've, we're nowhere, we haven't done anything.
Then you have no motion.
Then you have no motion. Can I re, put mine up or no?
You could renew your motion.
Got it, okay, all right, so, you know, just to, to be clear again, she's going to offer a motion, it'll be seconded, we'll have a discussion on it. If you agree that hers should be substituted for mine, that will be the vote, okay, for that, and then once you agree to that, then we have to vote again to accept it overall. Recognizing that, recognizing if you vote for her the first time, that essentially kills my motion unless I offer it again later, so we'll see, you know, this meeting is going on pretty long, so I don't know where we are, but Ms. Williams, do you have a motion to offer? Say it again.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one second, sorry.
Is this in board docs? Can you put it up?
Move to substitute.
You're going to move to substitute?
I moved to substitute, sorry, I just had it, I moved to substitute the current motion with that Prince William County School Board revisit the superintendent's phased-in return-to-learning plan on February 17th, 2021, excuse me, 2021, after receiving updates on the health metrics and progress of the vaccine distribution.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Jackson seconds. Okay, discussion. Ms., Ms. Williams, do you want to go first, and let's keep it brief?
Thank you. So I offered the substitute motion because it seems that the, the only thing all eight of us have in common is that we would like to revisit this discussion on February 17th for further updates, and I think at that time, we will be more knowledgeable about where we stand with health metrics, vaccine distributions. There is no scheduled changes to the superintendent's return, phased-in return-to-learn plan as far as bringing students in or any of that nature between now and that date, and so I think it offers a happy medium. As always, everyone is free to vote as they wish.
Ms. Jackson?
I continue to ground my stance in following CDC and Virginia Department of Health, and as I've said from the beginning, and we don't have the data, so I agree with what Ms. Williams said, that it kind of offers a, what everybody is saying, and I support this motion. I think it also allows for us, or for me, to continue my stance on deferring to the education professional and seeking more data, and that we'll learn more by February. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Jessie?
I would like to support the motion, but with the understanding that Dr. Wallace still will have, we give him some discretion of what his plan is, and that because there are two elements in it that I like, is that you look at, you look at the vaccination and decline in metrics, and that I like. At the end of the day, I want to go on record to say that I really don't think these kids should be in school at all at this point with the high positivity rate and the surge. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Mr. Wilk?
Well, I appreciate the efforts, Ms. Williams. I, I can't support this, my fear is it potentially leaves an open nebulous to the planning of, by leaving it as the current plan that he wants to move, that Dr. Wallace has proposed, I think even in perfect situation, we won't be prepared to implement a potential March return-to-learn for phasing our students in under this. Respectfully to you, we all have different opinions, so that's my concern by maintaining the current plan. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
I would, because I would like to revisit that original motion, and because I believe we can put this item on the agenda for the 17th of February through the agenda planning process, I feel like, yeah, my, my thoughts are toward not accepting this motion or substitute, but I understand and appreciate the sentiment upon which it is offered.
Ms. Zargarpur?
I, I, I like the revisiting thing, but I, I really feel like it's important to have some kind of goal to at least work toward, and, and I know people criticize us for moving the goalposts all the time, and it's frustrating, and I know this could continue to frustrate people, but I really do feel like it's important to have a, a piece in this that says, with the idea that we are going to do this at this time, and I understand all the things that you did say earlier, Dr. Wallace, I, I, I get it, but I'm, I, I just want to see us get there sooner, safely, sooner and safely.
Any other comments? Dr. Wallace?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I would definitely support this plan, and one other thing that it provides for the school board is all of these things that we presented you to you tonight, that we're planning on doing to help the struggling learner, including working with some students in person, you would have an opportunity to see how that's starting to play out.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace, and so my comment on this motion, I will not support this motion, primarily because essentially, this is just validating what we currently have as a plan, and the only change that would happen if we got to that point would be possibly bringing in fourth and fifth and moving folks up closer to the first day after spring break, which is essentially the same plan as we have now, and, and I recognize Mrs. Williams' efforts in, in finding some commonality in this. I think we need to be more aggressive to say, let's just delay a month and leave hope open, because if we vote to support Ms. Williams' motion, then you're basically saying it's after spring break for middle and second, middle and high school, other than the fourth and fifth grade, and that's what Dr. Wallace has said over and over again, that the only change he would accept in his current plan would be moving fourth and fifth and possibly starting the first day after spring break.
Mr. Chairman, my motion is not basically saying that, it's saying we don't do anything or make any further decisions at all until February 17th, 2021, so that, that's what my motion is saying as the motion originator.
Right, but the.
So I just want to be clear, I don't want anyone to be misguided in thinking that I'm saying we're supporting Dr. Wallace's current plan or we're not supporting Dr. Wallace's current plan. My motion is essentially to not discuss this any further until we have more information on the one date that everybody agrees on, which is February 17th, 2021. So I don't want anybody misconstrued in saying that I'm agreeing or I'm not agreeing with Dr. Wallace's plan, I'm asking to, for the board to not make any further considerations until we have more updated information. That's, that's my motion.
Understood, understood, but effectively.
Well, I just didn't want you to rephrase what my motion.
No, 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 but, but what it effectively does if it passes is it delays all students in February. It effectively does Dr. Wallace's plan, because students will not come in in February.
Because there's no, there's no.
That's the current plan.
There's no, there's no current change between now and February 17th.
Right, so.
There's, there's no action on Dr. Wallace's plan, so there would be no action even if we made another motion tonight to move to March, if, say, we all agreed on your motion, there's still no change between now and February 17th. There wouldn't be any more additional students coming in, there wouldn't be anything different. So that's all I'm asking, is that we just revisit the discussion on February 17th, it doesn't have any impact to his plan presented two meetings ago, or his plan presented the last meeting.
Right, but, but you need to understand that if this passes, correct, you're, you're, you're supporting, this is in effect saying all middle and high schools will no longer report as currently scheduled, October, the plan, the October plan, that they will no longer report in February.
No, it's saying that we don't have this discussion until February 17th, 2021. This is not about Dr. Wallace's plan as he presented.
No, no, I understand that, but what.
This is about this board discussing any updates or changes to his plan, instead of doing it tonight, we revisit this issue on February 17th, 2020. That is what my motion is asking us to do.
Okay.
Is instead of discussing or making any changes or not making changes, we do it on February 17th, 2021.
But you, you, understood.
Right, so there's no.
But you are, but, but by doing this, recognize that, that you are accepting the plan change he made last Wednesday.
We have up until this evening already done that.
Understood.
So instead of making any determinations or decisions tonight, I'm asking for more time, and we do that on February 17th, 2021. So it's zero change, except for moving the date of this discussion, instead of finishing or finalizing it this evening, we do that on February 17th, 2021. So at that point, if anybody wants to make a change, go for it. If you don't want to make a change, that's fine too. I'm just asking with this motion, that instead of doing any action this evening, we are making, we are putting a hold on it until February 17th.
Understood. So again, I'll wrap up by saying that I, I will still not support it in the sense that my motion does the same thing. We come back February 17th, and we say, well, here's where we are, we're revisiting it, the March potential is gone, or it's here, we could do it, or we're going to do April.
But Mr. Chairman, your, your motion also asks that we pause for one month, so I'm, I'm, it is different than what I'm asking.
Right.
So it's not the same, it's not essentially the same thing. I'm, I'm sorry to be such a pain about words and motions, but I think it's important that we communicate it clearly.
But what actually happens between, well, what happens between now and February 17th is the same thing on either motion.
It's, it's not, because your motion is worded that we pause until March, my motion has no pause, no nothing until a particular date other than February 17th.
No, I understand, but effectively.
And that is the board's discussion, it's not the superintendent's plan.
Right, right, right.
So it is different.
Understood, understood, but just so you know, no matter which one passes, no students, no new students over third grade will report.
They, they would not report between now and February 17th anyway.
Understood, very good. Okay, let's take the vote, so are we going to do this, this is a vote on the substitute motion to accept Ms. Williams' substitute motion to just, did you put it in board docs?
I did, but I'm going to record it.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call on it, just because the, if, it's going to mess it up if we don't do it any other way, so this is, if you are in favor of Ms. Williams' motion, I will start with Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Wilk votes no. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Wall votes no. Dr. Latif, I vote no. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
No.
What is the total?
Five, no, three yes, motion fails.
The motion fails. So what I would ask now is that we vote on my motion, which was the original motion, since the substitute failed, and this motion basically just delays the return of students from February-ish to March, and we will revisit in the February 17th meeting to see if it's even possible to come in in March, and that's essentially what this motion is. Please vote, and this one is on the screen. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Jackson votes no. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Jessie votes no.
Five yes, three no, motion passed.
The motion passes to, as was read earlier, so this, again, this essentially, this motion says that the school board will come back on February 17th, relook at where we are. It also just moves the student. It also just moves the students who are supposed to come in after the third-grade level one month forward, and we will revisit based on, as we put in the recommendation, where the vaccines are, where the health metrics are. If vaccines are good, if health metrics are better, we have the potential to bring students in March. If they are not, then we will make that call February 17th. At this point, with no further business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.